I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Oh, look at all of you out there. Well, room almost, and familiar faces. Thanks for coming. We have a kind of busy agenda, but before we start, I just want to let everyone know that the room is set up differently. So if you haven't been here at our last meeting or watched, we're asking that if you would like to address the board or have something to say, please go to the podium so that everyone can hear you. I think the last time people waited for someone to leave the podium before they went up, but that's not necessary. If it's a hot-button topic and you want to form a line, that would be okay too. And just let us know who you are and where you live so those at home know who's speaking. All right. Our first item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Park Commission, who I think is in the front row, and they're here to talk about it, talk with us about the playing field and facility permit policy for Conan Park and Labree Field.
Yeah, you can't hold it down, yeah?
And one more thing. Dr. McDougal, you're going to have to move that microphone towards your face so that people can hear you. You have to actually speak into it. And don't forget to move it down there. Just gently, you're not going to talk.
Evening. My name's Mark Reed, Chair of the Park Commission. Paula Mac is a member of the Commission, she's also here, and Jeff Swanson is also here as a member. What we'd like to talk about is we've been working on a new policy for the playing fields and facility use, not only for Conan Park but for Labree Field, which is going to be coming online this year. And we've been trying to come up with a plan that we can put on the town's website so that everyone knows what the policies are, what we have to offer, and where to go to for reservations, not only for the pavilion, which Paula takes care of right now, for reservations for the pavilion, but for individual usage of the fields, being at either Conan Park or Labree Field. So we've put together this policy, which I emailed to Heather, and hopefully she provided to you copies of it all. It's a work in progress. We were hoping to get it a little further along, and it's close, it's being done, but one of the things that we're still struggling with is fees. As everyone knows, the budget is nonexistent. Currently, we have, in our operating budget, zero monies to mow the grass this coming spring, if it ever comes. So that we have no budget to mow the grass at Conan Park, never mind Labree Field. Right now, we are, our budget's zero. So we've been trying to figure out a way to generate some funds, so that we have, on page eight of the policy, we've come up with some fees that participants would pay the town that would use the field. And we kind of have outlined it in priorities of use, tier one, tier one A, tier two, and so forth, going down this list, giving first preference to the residents, of course, of Southampton, and then outlining groups and associations. We've had some interests from outside groups wanting to use Labree Field for ball fields. For instance, we have an over thirty men's league that would like to rent it every Sunday for the summer, for an over thirty men's league to place baseball on it every Sunday. So that we're trying to generate some type of, not only usage and policy, but to come up with a fee structure for that. We've never charged any of the town's children or SYAA for usage of the fields in the past. We've gotten some money through SYAA in the past to do some repairs and some donations that we've worked with throughout the years with them, but, for instance, they have the new posters or sign boards that are behind the backstops, and they get monies for those if you're advertising.
And that's why the dugouts are down this year.
Correct. And that's what paid for the dugouts.
And the scoreboard was put up.
Right. For the new dugouts that are down on Conan Park, and then the new sign board and so forth, that SYA didn't cost the town anything, SYA paid for that out of those funds and so forth. So we would like some input from the select board as far as, one, how do we generate monies to maintain the fields? Because within our budget, we don't have any monies to maintain or mow the grass or fertilize the fields, for instance, in Labree Field that's coming up on this year. And two is coming up with a comprehensive permit so that everyone knows where they stand with the policy. We, also on page seven, we have the pavilion rentals. We upped the fees for the pavilions. I'm sorry, not page seven. Page six. Page six, we increased the fees to rent the pavilion by $25 for residents and $25 for non-residents this year, so that's new, to try to generate some funds for that, and along with a security policy or deposit. So six and seven deal with the pavilion and rentals for that, and an application to provide...
Okay. So here's my first question. The SYA, if you pay for your child to play sports in SYAA and they don't pay any money to maintain the field, where does that money go? What does SYA, other than backstops and the scoreboard?
The SYA...
Tammy, you've got to come up here.
Sorry.
Tammy Walunis, SYA sponsorship coordinator. Right now, when we have a sponsor come in, they pay $150, and that sponsor is for a team. That covers their shirts. If it's soccer, it covers shirts and socks. If it's baseball, it covers shirts and hats. Softball, same thing, shirts and hats. I do believe basketball is just shirts, but that $150 covers that, towards that. So there's normally ten kids on there. Each kid, each shirt is like 10 bucks, so there's really no...
No extra.
...play there.
Okay.
We have some sports that make money, and we have sports that lose money. And we put it all in one kitty, and that's why we ended up doing these banners this year, or previous year, excuse me, I think we're on year four, for doing the banners. As people come in, we do fundraising of water bottles, of magnets, of different things, and that's how we've been able to get money. We're a nonprofit organization.
Where does the money go that I pay? And I'm just saying me, because I have kids in the program.
Your $45?
Or $95 for baseball this year, or $50 for soccer. Where does that money go?
That goes towards tournaments and leagues, like with the baseball. If you're in part of baseball, there's tournaments and leagues that we have to pay money towards for the kids to go to.
Okay.
So that is also covering part of their uniform, but it's also covering other items...
We have that.
Yes, please.
Jeff Swanson, 100 Glendale Road in Southampton. I'm actually the currently former baseball president, but as of last year. But no, basically, everything, all the sports break even. So baseball, for example, is a pretty expensive sport, because you've got bats, helmets, balls. Tournament balls are different. They're $33 a dozen, for a dozen baseballs. We have the water next door to our major league field, so a lot of balls go into the swamp, as John knows from years of digging them out. We also have to pay umpires. So the new thing now, in the minors and the majors, is now the kids, youth, can actually start to umpire, so we give them a fee for that. We now co-op with East Hampton. They charge for two umpires for both majors and also juniors, again, paying for the umpires for that. So bottom line is, when you get done with the entire mix, plus the insurance provided by Little League and all of that cost, it's pretty much a break even.
So there's no extra money there to help, at this point, maintain the fields?
We've already begun to put in a little bit extra this year. You probably saw the bump in your pricing.
Yeah.
With anticipation that there may be a user fee.
Okay.
You know, being now with the Park Commission, I can be the liaison between the two and have an understanding that five, $10 per child would probably be about that cost.
Cover the cost.
And also, the nice thing was, in Mark's presentation, is that we, last year, began to have Randall give us the actual mowing costs. So we have a division through all of last year with those mowing costs were. So the numbers are actually based on what the mowing costs projections were from last year, spread into the fields, knowing the number of participants, and then, so ideally, we could, even at these smaller rates, could cover just the mowing. That does not include capital expenditures, because then there's other questions as user fees come in, as to now, who's going to provide the balls? Who's going to provide the nets? Who's going to provide the different things? So there's another area we'll have to, you know, with, this is the first step, is to start there. SYA's always provided their own nets, their own everything as part of that.
So if you charged a user fee, the Parks Commission would be responsible for providing balls and nets?
That becomes the next question. So we're not in that...
We haven't even...
We're not even into that business yet. That's where SYA has been a fantastic...
What do other towns and cities do?
It's usually cooperative, where they still have their separate parks and rec, but then they have their volunteers from the community that still run the programs. And the park and rec eventually becomes the fee collector and then provides those type of things. So as the town grows and as the community grows and the volunteerism decreases, then the parks and rec needs to pick up from there, which is the future for here.
Ask a question. I mean, it sounds like the big question, big expense is, who's going to pay for mowing the grass?
That's the immediate question.
I mean, you pay the highway department to mow the grass, which I've always said doesn't make sense. I mean, if there is a budget to mow the grass, the highway department should have the grass. They should have the responsibility for it, and you folks should supply your nets, your balls, and all that stuff. I mean, that's my opinion. Why don't we look at doing that? Why do we have one budget pay another budget?
I think it's because it's a highway department and public works.
Well, still, we can...
But I'm just saying, if you just, the strict highway department doesn't usually mow the parks, well, the public works...
We only have a parks and recs department that has enough lawn mowers to do the job in the first place.
Yeah.
So it'd be something to think about, we structure as before, at least, we function as a town, as a, as a...
Need to open your microphone.
Yeah. I think regardless of what we call them, they're doing it now, and they're getting paid for it. So all I'm saying is, put the budget where the work is, not, you know...
Well, nevertheless, if that was the case, they wouldn't have any money to mow for May, June, and July of this year.
I'm saying, we need to make sure there's money in that budget to do all the mowing in the town.
To do all of it. Because that's where we are, you know, right now, because, because the highway department did do some of the maintenance at Labree Field last fall, which really wasn't budgeted for. We have monies in the account for the labor, but we don't have monies to buy gas and maintain the lawn mowers within that.
Doesn't seem to make sense. And the cemetery's the same way, right? We pay highway department to do the cemetery. Again, we're all in town, it seems like, establish a budget and get it done properly all season long, whether it's May, June, or, you know, April.
I do have a question about SYAA. How much money is in the bank right now? How much money do you have?
Right now, going into the baseball season, with all the deposits of registration, I believe there's $19,000 in there. You're going to want to note that.
I heard that sometimes it's up to $30,000 in there. There was a discussion a few years back that SYA was reluctant to use some of the cash for the upkeep of Conan Park. And that was a discussion that went on about six years ago. Has that philosophy kind of changed to help out?
Yes.
Okay.
Because when NOR School needed to have turf brought in, we brought turf in.
Okay.
When Conan Park needed to have some stuff done, we did that.
I just know that there was a schism between SYAA members. Some left because they thought some of the funds should have been used to upgrade the parks, but it sounds like that's changed.
Yes. And well, also updating, doing updates to the park itself, there was a problem with that, where we were told that, yes, we could buy things, but they already had it bought. They just wanted us to pay for it, but it was...
Who's they?
At Collie. The highway department.
Because there was a whole discussion about the backstop at Conan Park.
Yep. And we wanted to fix that, and then we went, and once we found out that the commission, historic, no, the Park Commission, there's some money there that they would be able to help us with that, because that was falling apart. We made sure we had the money to do it before approaching, but we needed to get things started. And then, once we got that going, then we realized the new fence needed to be put in. We got the dugouts going.
Was the infield, was it resawed over at Conan Park? Because I know the baselines were kind of like ruts. Was that redone?
Yes.
Recently? Okay. It's been a while since it's been over there.
Yeah. Well, there's been a lot of, and we have, it's all different families from town, or all-star families, basically, that get together and have worked and done stuff in Conan Park itself, at NOR School itself. Sprinkler systems being put in in different places, cleaning up the snack shack.
And moving forward, there's obviously going to be maintenance costs for the 90-footer and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Have you looked into projected costs for upkeep besides mowing and...
That's, you know, that's some of the things that we've been working with Randall on, which I don't, he couldn't make it tonight, because I'm, because of the weather conditions, I'm sure. But to come up with a good fix on what it's going to cost to maintain it, it's not only just the mowing of it, but the field needs to be lined and fertilized so it continues to look like it does, you know, last fall when it was in there. So we are trying to get a good handle on that, and we don't have a good handle on what that's going to be right now, to come up with a plan, what, how much that dollar figure's going to be to fertilize it and keep it up. What we're trying to do is, which has been great to have Jeff as a member of the Park Commissions, because he knows SYAA, and he's been with SYAA for 30 years or whatever, to get a good handle on it. So it's been a big help, and that's, I think, really what has been helpful to generate this new policy and get somewhere, because we have a lot better communication with SYAA now, and we're working together, and they've, you know, to come up with a plan to improve what needs to get done down in the park.
But Mark, is it fair to say at this point that these fees, as you have adjusted them, do not take into consideration of that upkeep? Is that a fair statement? That these are, these fees would maybe just cover mowing, but not the upkeep?
Well, we're hopeful that it does.
Okay.
David. One of the unknowns is, we know what is going to get generated for the participants from SYAA, but we don't know what might come from outside of the town. Hampshire United is another group that wants to use some of the facilities, so we don't know what kind of commitment or how many children they would have until we come up with a policy and so forth. So, and I see a gentleman that I haven't met, but must be from Hampshire United, is here tonight. You know, when the group for the over thirty league came in and to discuss with us and said, you know, "How much do you guys want to charge us? We'll pay you." We didn't know what to say, because we don't have a policy and in place to do that. So now we're kind of getting to a point where we can say, okay, here's the fee proposals, and we can generate that money, and then try to work through the next year and see where it leads us to.
And we were also cautious in the proposals, making known that lining of the fields and certain expectations are still unusable.
Okay.
With the fees being as modest as they are. Kind of stipulting into it, we're now getting the mowing done, and we have some extra monies to start doing some capital improvements. The other nice thing is, the CPA funding now has changed, so now the criteria allows you to go to existing parks to do work on existing parks. So there's another ingredient now that we didn't have in the past that we could look into.
So I just have a question about the fee proposal. So it breaks it down by the age of the participant, right?
Correct.
Is there a reason, so that would be a fluid number, right? There could be 20 kids between the ages of birth and eight years old one year, and 50 the next year, and the numbers could be much smaller or much bigger in each group every year. Wouldn't it make more sense to just have one flat fee?
We, I guess we talked about that. You know, there are a lot of families that have young children that might have more than one or two going into the group. We felt that the younger kids, you know, deserved a break.
They weigh less.
So is this fee is...
They weigh less, less wear and tear, you know?
Yeah, right. Less wear and tear.
Their costs are cheaper.
Yeah, right. The costs are cheaper.
So how do they pay that fee, though? So, for example, I'm, I have a little boy, and he's eight. Do I have to pay you $5 for him to play, or you add that into the cost of the SYA registration?
Right now, the policy, the way it's set up, is that the fees would be paid by, for starters, using SYAA as the guinea pig here, by SYAA. So a family would pay the fee to SYAA, whatever that fee is, and then come around and make the application to us and say, "We want to use this field and that field and Labree Field for five games, or six games, or 10 games, and we have 30 children." And that would come from SYAA to us. So that individually, because we couldn't figure out, and we still don't know how this is going to work bookkeeping-wise, so it doesn't just go into the general fund and disappear, how that's going to be generated in-house. We're going to have to set up a revolving account of some type so that we make sure that monies that we do get in stay with the Park Commission.
So what happens if not enough kids sign up in the zero to eight-year-old range to keep track, to mow those fields one year?
Well, then the town's going to have to come up with the money somehow. You know, there's no, there's no set answer.
Go ahead, Sonia.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Tammy, I didn't, yep, go ahead. Sorry, I'm sorry.
My biggest question is, there are multiple fields over at Labree Field, and some of us want to use the 90-foot, the 90-foot baseball diamond. Some want to use the registration soccer fields. How is that going to be broken up in fee costs and everything? Because I mean, when SYA goes in and we use Conan Park, there's, there's three teams, or three sections set up that are just for the little kids, and then there's four sections set up for the middle kids, and then we have to go over to NOR School for two more. And we provide all the lime and, or the paint for marking, we provide the goals, we've bought new benches for Conan Park this year. So how is that going to play into what it's going to cost for each of our areas going in? I mean, I could, I could see us, you know, Hampshire, Hampshire United and SYA being at Labree at the same time. Is that how you're going to make all the money to pay for this, is because you're going to be charging us to be over in this little section and another group to be over in this section?
And who does the scheduling of the fields?
I don't know. Who does the scheduling of the fields?
I guess right now, there is an application fee for using it. Going back to page... I guess four kind of outlines the application periods on page four. And in that is, the application period opens for the spring season in January, so somebody would make an application with the Park Commission, saying, "We want to use this field for this many teams for the spring season."
So you've got to do it at the beginning, or you don't get a shot at it again, or...
Excuse me?
You have to do it at the beginning, or you don't get a shot? If some team wants to have a special game, is there somewhere they can go now and say, "I want to use the field on this day"? Is it open?
Yes. Yeah. We've left flexibility within the policy to do that, yes. And then there's a date for summer and fall and winter sports here.
What happens if it's, and rains on the day that it was supposed to be? Do they get a refund?
That's, yeah, that's something that we have talked about in trying to schedule that up, which is a major headache to deal with. But rescheduling days, for instance, if somebody rents the fields for every Saturday, and we get five Saturdays in a row that rain, then that's, you know, we're going to have to try to come up with a way to, to generate that. Just that, without a policy, or whether you charge or don't charge, we need, we need a policy to, so that people know how, how the fields are going to get used and how it's going to be managed, because right now, you know, we do have other groups that would like to use it.
This is a great start, Mark. This is a good start.
So, but I'll let Sonia speak, or other people.
What is, what do you mean by excessive litter? Shouldn't it be just no litter? Or they should be cleaning up after themselves or something like that?
What part do you want?
Excuse me?
Which part do you want?
Page four, underneath, I just, I just want to make sure, I mean, after they're done using it, they police themselves.
Yeah. I mean, we, we did have an issue with, that we went back to the old format of the highway department going in, and it's now back working a lot better. Because of the funds and the lack of funds, what we had, asked people that rented the pavilion to take their own trash home with them. That didn't work out too well. We had a couple occasions when people didn't take the trash together. And then somebody rented it on a Sunday, and it came in and was dirty. So what is happening now is that the trash is left inside, locked inside the pavilion in the highway department. If somebody rents it on a Saturday, we'll pick it up on a Monday. If it's rented two days in a row, Paula notifies the highway department that we have two functions going in there, and the highway department will check it on Saturday after the function to make sure it's clean enough, and then your security deposits returned to you. You know, during the week, the highway department does police it for trash and picks up the trash and, you know, does a good job at that.
Mrs. Palante.
I'd be speaking sort of for Hampshire United. I've been sitting in on the parks and recs meeting, and I think they're doing a tremendous job of trying to figure out how this is going to work. I mean, practices are going to also come into play, but for Hampshire United, because there is no other soccer in spring, is going to appeal to the parks and rec to try to get permission to use it. And if we looked at that, just that baseline user fee on it right now, we would be giving the town $1,965 for the usage of the spring time for just soccer. It doesn't have anything to do with the baseball fields, but it's just soccer. And when you ask about the higher fee for the older kids and the younger kids, one of the things that you guys have built, the town has built, is this beautiful premier field, and it might require a little bit more maintenance, and it's the older kids that are going to be playing on that. So that could justify the higher fee for the older players. And I don't know exactly all of the thinking behind of it, but it makes perfect sense to users that if we're going to have this premier field that has drainage already to it, and you're going to have to maintain that, then $15 versus $10 makes sense. So it's not something that's going to throw us off. And as far as, like, the rosters, and if you have a little bit lower amount of players one year versus the other, it all evens out. And really, the higher numbers are probably in the younger age. And really, the higher numbers are probably in the younger age. You know, for instance, we had two U-9 teams for boys this year at Hampshire. And so it's not, of course, as a town, we always have to worry about the next, you know, how are we going to do the budget the next year? But as far as rosters go, they pretty much stay even throughout every season. So, and if this is how it looks like it's set up, that we pay this user fee for the spring, then our fall user fee would be even higher than that, because our fall is always higher. I mean, the biggest thing that I think that they have the challenge with is the scheduling, because there are, you know, Hampshire United, SYA is a feeding ground for Hampshire United. It truly is. And so you're talking really the same population looking at these premier fields and locations and stuff like that all at the same time. And that's what they're, they're going to have the most, biggest struggle with, this is scheduling of practices. You've got to remember, practices are going on too, not, along with the games.
And the parks commission is in charge of all of that scheduling? SYA, oh, you.
I gotta step back from SYA, look at the bigger picture with the park commission. So that's one of the reasons why you keep the park commission now, you know, the baseball part of it, you know, helping schedule and all that. Because I come from a strong park strength background.
So it seems like Hampshire United is in agreement that this sounds on the surface as it is now, a good plan? Yes? Mr. Brostad?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with everything that Sonia said. And I mean, I, I don't know how much you guys know about Hampshire United. We can go into a little bit of background. I think we all know SYA. I think most of us know Hampshire United, but, I mean, we consider ourselves a community-based, competitive soccer club. And in a lot of ways, kids, my kids, came up through SYA in terms of baseball, basketball, whatever, and soccer. And the natural extension for that, for a lot of kids that want a more competitive play, and as they get older, is to go into a club like ours. And we serve the, not just Southampton, but, you know, pretty much, we focus on those, those towns that feed the Hampshire United, or Hampshire Regional District. So, you know, that's why we call ourselves Hampshire United. But we're not limited to that. So, you know, some kids from Northampton come in, you know, whatever. We're, we're trying to field teams as best we can. But it's town-based, you know, so, so we have regulations around that. If there's, we're not going to be stealing from towns, for instance, if they have their own team. So it's very community-based, and the whole idea is to sync with what they need as they go into a high school team, you know, Ju- University and varsity. So I think a, a natural progression is SYA to Hampshire United up to, you know, the regional, if that's the course that they choose. And we've been playing, as you may know, up in West Hampton for years, and probably you've seen the conditions of those fields. It's built on a sand pit, and it's not conducive to good play in a lot of ways. It, it doesn't really match the level of the play, and we see the, the fields that you guys have built, I mean, they're just gorgeous, right? I mean, it's, it's a premier field. We want to be part of maintaining it, because I think, you know, Ian's most recently taken over sort of maintenance of our field. And we've worked really well with, you know, the, the principal up there and some of the, the folks that maintain those, those fields. And you can't really pour money into it and really have any benefit. You can't, you know, there's like no sod, and you, you can't really build that up, because the water, water just doesn't go through. So we're interested in participating in a maintenance plan that makes sense, and this obviously just, just makes all the sense in the world. You know, we haven't been able to charge any money to improve the fields, because it really would take like tens of thousands of dollars. We just don't have that. I mean, we're, you know, I, I think SYA has, you know, quite a few different programs involved. We're just soccer, so, you know, we probably have in and out of our account twenty thousand dollars a year, but our balance tends to be about five or six, so that's kind of our swing. So if we're going to be paying more, we'll see an immediate increase in our user fees. And I think that's cool, because people will see an immediate impact and say, oh, yeah, I mean, we're not playing on the sand pit anymore. It's, it's great, you know? So that's really our number one thing. I mean, everything else seems pretty stable right now with Hampshire United. We really want to improve the condition of the field, so it's really important to us, and we want to make sure that it's working. And I think, you know, we, we've actually been talking with SYA as well. So, you know, I think it's, it's good that we're kind of on the same page, and maybe we're not quite on the same page, but at the same time, we're talking, and I, and I really like that. Because, you know, our program shouldn't be in competition, really, it's kind of a progression. And I'd like to do the same thing with you guys, you know, make sure that, that we're, that we're helping each other out, because I think this can be great, and I want it to be great.
Great. Thank you. I do have one more, I have another question.
Okay, sorry.
And I'm not sure who can answer it, but I, and maybe nobody can right now, but I guess I would just like to know, how much does it cost to maintain all of the fields we're talking about, and what is the projection from this fee schedule?
Sure.
So when I, when we got the fees from last year, I broke it down into three seasons, kind of like how the schedule shows. So when we got the initial preliminary color coding that I like to do, you know, I took it from April twenty-fifth was, hopefully we can mow this year at that time, through to July first. So I took it into sections based on seasonality. And so roughly, it was about fifteen hundred dollars to mow for that first season. So if we're looking at nineteen hundred from soccer already, that covers mowing, and that included Conan, a little bit of crossroads is built into there, and then also Labree was just starting to need some mowing. Should need a little bit more for this year. So I think when we, when I proposed the pricing structure, and we all talked about it, we took into account covering last year's mowing costs. Same thing over the summertime, it was about sixteen hundred, fall was about two thousand. We're hoping the grass will grow a little better at Labree, so that we'll have to attend to it a little bit more. But I think that's where the cooperation with soccer and baseball and, and on any other user fees that come in, top priority is maintaining a premier fields out at Labree in the same quality they've always had at Conan Park, in with the cooperation of the groups.
So about five hundred?
Yeah, yep.
That doesn't include all the fixing, the?
Purely mowing.
Turf and?
Keeping the guys and the riders and the mowers, yep.
How much do you think it, I mean, this is just a guess limit to, like, maintain a ninety footer. It's a brand-new field, I mean, what does the average cost?
You know, it's, it's, it's going to be, um, it's not a lot, it's not as much as you think. Once, once you get things set and, and you're, you're coming down, the guys also come around, and we have the, have you ever seen the drag machine that we have? As long as you do that and maintain your weed control, the, what I taught with baseball is, is that this is your field, the kids' fields, and so the pride of picking up the rock and throwing it off, because, you know, the ball's going to hit that next time it gets a grounder. So you, you, it becomes a community field in a sense, where you, you know, educate the coaches and the teams, and they rake it afterwards, and I think we'll maintain that.
Now, you expect in the highway department to actually do the, the dragging and stuff like that?
If there's, they've been doing it for us.
They've been doing it, okay.
Yep.
So Randall's okay with this plan?
Well, he's not here to speak, so we're...
Have we talked, has anyone talked to Randall about this?
I mean, he, he has been happy on all of this, but just back with him multiple times.
Yeah, we, I wanted to get this, so I could formulate some type of plan to start. Yep.
So I'd be interested to see how he feel, you know, what his plan is, like, would he send you guys a bill that says, you know, we mowed this and this is how much it costs, and then we pay him, which gets back to your point.
Mm-hmm.
John, I just don't know what, at this point, how you would turn that around? How you would, how would you switch that at this point?
Well, my thought would be, if we can have Randall sit down with the park commission and try to figure out what it would cost to maintain all these fields, then we can back into the different organizations. United, Hampshire United is two thousand dollars, okay, that would pay for this. SYA may contribute X amount. If we have a rough cost of what it's going to be for Randall to do all the work, I think we can back into it. Now we're kind of just blowing in the wind.
Well, I think that's what he just gave us.
Yeah, we just, I kind of backed into it from last year, yeah.
But did Randall say that's what it would cost?
Those, these are Randall's figures.
Those are Randall's.
These are all, Randall tracked it from last year.
I just wonder, you know, the, the part where Randall says, okay, this guy, this guy, and this guy mowed the fields for ten hours, and now you owe me this, so that it's not coming out of his budget.
So we might have to...
That's the part we need to work on.
I think for, for internal billing, you might have to do something like that, just to bill hours and stuff like that. And I think the town, uh, town administrator has an answer for us.
And he's been doing that already. So I, I have actually, you know, you know, down to Dave, Paul, Eric.
So now it's just a matter of getting, actually getting him the money that he's expended?
Exactly.
Okay.
And the concern, obviously, for any user group, is that the money that goes into this fund is dedicated towards the upkeep of the fields.
So the highway budget is an interesting one. We actually do not fund them for what they need to operate annually. What we do is, we give them enough for about seventeen weeks worth of work during the rest of the year, and then we fund, you know, winter wages and roads. And the rest of the time, it's made up through billing, different departments like park commission and ceremetary for mowing and et cetera, et cetera. John, we have been exploring your idea more and more with various places in town. It's not just the highway department that we've done this, where we charge ourselves from one department to pay another department, instead of just putting the initial costs in the department where the money's going in the end. We do that a lot. I don't know why, but that's how we've always done it. So to go back and look at how to fix it, it takes a lot of work. The problem you run into with the highway department is, for instance, this year, you say, okay, we're going to level fund all the budgets. All right, well, you level fund the budget, but now you're saying, well, instead of having, you know, two thousand dollars in your budget for general highway expenses, you need to have four thousand, so you have enough to mow, but don't take it from someplace else in your budget. We're going to inflate your budget by two thousand dollars, because we're going to take it from one department and put it in there instead. So now, instead of level funding them, it looks like they actually got an increase. You, we can totally do that, and that's something we can look at, and if that's a idea that the board would further like to see pursued throughout everything consistently, we can definitely work on that, so the numbers are more realistic. And instead of having to bounce money from, you know, the park commission over to the highway garage, we can just put it directly in the highway department's budget to begin with, which would make a lot more sense and save on billing and probably a lot more hours and everything else. But that's something, it's a decision, yeah, decision of the board's selectmen to make.
Because one of the other thoughts, and, but Randall would prefer to mow our fields in town, in East Hampton, they'll hire a college student for the summertime to take care of the fields, and they'll come out of their, their Parks and Rec budget that way. But in this case, the, because of the way the structure is for the guys, they really need to have the mowing hours, and Randall's counting on that, so.
And the way to account for it is just put a line item in the budget, park mowing. I mean, that way, when you're cutting the budgets or increasing the budgets, let's look at positive, we'll know exactly what it's for. If you co-mingle it, you never even know.
The thing I wanted to make clear is that, that the fees we're talking about, and these are just proposed right now, we haven't set them in stone, are for a participant for the entire soccer season, or baseball season, or whatever sport he or she are playing. So it's not a per-game fee. So it's a, you know, it's an entire soccer season, or entire softball season, or baseball season.
And SYA is different from Hampshire United? Our soccer season is only two months, where theirs is all year.
No, we do.
We have two sessions. So we have fall and a spring, and we may have fewer teams in the spring, but usually it's about the same. So we have, we have two, not in winter or summer.
That's where the comment came in, that we'd be paying nineteen some for the spring, and then it would go up in the fall.
In the fall.
Knowing that we have two sessions making two payments. So even if we had, if, and if you had just one, you'd only be paying for that one in the fall, where Hampshire would do the spring and the fall. So it would be, you know...
Almost seems like we have sources of revenue out there. We just need to coordinate the costs with the revenue and work out a plan.
Yeah, I think so, too. Does that include practices? Because we've been, one of the things, when I said we want to work together, I mean, we want to make sure that we don't destroy the fields, right? So, I mean, if we, if we need to come to an arrangement where we're, we're doing practices, you know, somewhere else, we could even use the existing fields that we have now. I think that that's fine. And it might actually be more central for us. So that could work, you know, so that we're keeping it as pristine as we can. But is, is, does this take into account practices too?
What I would ask for is that you send in your wish list, though.
Mm-hmm. I think it'd be nice to be able to use it for practices.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so you put in what your, your perfect schedule would be, and then each group does the same, and then it's our role to sit down and be fair and equitable.
I do have one suggestion at the end where the checks get sent to. It currently lists Polamac's home address, but I think that it might be a better practice to not have checks sent to someone's personal address and rather to the town hall, perhaps the treasurer's office, attention, you know, something rather than someone's house. Just something I might think about changing.
Are you advising that for just them or for SYA also?
Well, I think any, you know, any permit fees would be best sent to the town hall and, you know.
Right. I get, I guess, I'll speak for, that's prob, it's probably okay with Paula, except for what happens in the, this is kind of a, page six is dealing with the pavilion only. We really haven't figured out where the checks would go from SYA or Hampshire United or the over thirty league yet, where they would go. But what happens is the security deposit is a check that you write to the town, and if you leave the park or the pavilion clean and the area clean, Paula just returns that check to you.
Where's the check? The check comes here initially, or to you initially?
Goes to Paula's house, so that she keeps track of it. And then she'll write a warrant to deposit the checks that come in for the actual fees on a regular basis, because, you know, we're all volunteers and we work from our house and, but we could, we could change that to have it come here or to the, you know, to a central location and Paula could, you know...
Okay.
Perhaps the town administrator?
We, we can always just call you when they come in. I mean, I don't expect you're going to get hundreds and hundreds of applications to have a one-day license over at the pavilion, that we're going to be inundated with checks coming through the door.
Well, last year, yeah, well, we do. We get quite a few. The pavilion gets used quite a bit, most every weekend, sometimes two days on...
Fifty?
And right now, we got fifty reservations, and it's not even...
Last year, we had fifty.
Yeah, last year, we had fifty.
It's just something to think about.
How soon do people require you to submit something before they get used?
No, sir?
How soon, so if I want to use the pavilion, how soon would I have to notify you with my check in advance?
Paula has probably, what, fifteen now?
I have five already, which people have already sent me checks for.
But how many days?
But, but how much at minimum? If I want to, if I want to say I want to use it, um, let's say, April second?
Right.
What's the absolute latest I'm supposed to send you information by?
Before somebody else books it.
Tell them to send it to me.
Immediately.
Because I tell them the day.
But there's no deadline, is what you're saying?
No, I think it's, I think our paper has like a three-week half...
Okay. So what I'm trying to say is, if it's a three-week deadline ahead of time, if we come up with an arrangement, so every week, we call you on Thursday and say, hey, we've got paperwork for you, come pick it up.
We can work that out.
I think you could just stand up there and say, so that we know.
Right.
A question, a question, and all the reservations for the pavilion, are most of them in-town residents or most out, or is it?
Most are in-town.
Okay, good. Now, on page six here, and I think it's just probably a typo, but it only has security deposit under resident, not non-resident, but I'm assuming that carries across, too?
Yes.
Okay.
For both.
My, my personal opinion is, I think the residence should be a lot lower than the out-of-town, and the out-of-town should be up here. I, I don't know that we want to encourage out-of-towners to use it, personal opinion, but I think the people already pay taxes for this.
Well, we had a lot of people that, um, when we talked about the trash issue and so forth, going back and forth, had no problem paying an increase to a hundred and fifty dollars, even if you're a resident, for using it for an entire day. We've had no complaints about how much it costs to rent a pavilion, and we felt it was a fair...
It is substantial, Chief, rather than leasing it out.
Correct.
What about raising the out-of, the non-residents up? Because to me, you know...
Yep.
In, in here, it says not to open the middle door, not to unlock it. What's in there?
Shh.
Well, I'm just wondering, because if the key is the same for the middle door as the bathroom, why would you just not, if, if it's different, just don't give them the
why would you just not, if, if it's different, just don't give them the middle key?
It's the mechanical part of the, of the building in itself.
Are they the same key, though, for the bathroom in the middle door? Is it the same key? It's the same key? Would, I mean, how much would it cost to change it so we don't have that problem? If you don't want anybody to touch it, why don't you just get a different lock?
If you change it, you can't turn the lights on.
Right.
But you can't, it says not to unlock it.
So you don't tell them. You gotta get in there to turn the lights on.
I guess I was just confused about why it said, don't unlock it, but if that's the only way to turn the lights on, then you have to unlock it.
So if I rent the pavilion, I've gotta go in that middle one to turn the lights on when I go there, is that?
Maybe if it's a dark day or something.
Don't unlock the door.
Um, you know, the pavilion rentals only go to dusk, so the pavilion doesn't get used at night.
All right, I just wondered about that.
It's only dusk, to dusk, rentals.
Got it. Mr. Brostad?
I just had a question, based upon what we've been talking about in the case of Hampshire United. Would you consider us tier two or tier one A? Or tier one, I suppose, not, not Hampshire regional, so it'd be either one A or two?
Yeah, I would be two.
Two? And would SYAA be considered tier two or tier one A?
One A.
I'd like us to be considered one A if you would agree. Is there a reason not to?
Um, only do we, do we have to set a priority, and we, I think the idea was that SYAA existed more or less a parks and rec in town, all reserves, or the feeder for the kids. So just to create a little bit of a design tier one A two, if it made sense to label this way.
I think we're looking to enter probably into a new relationship, so, I mean, I think we'd probably be working with you the same way that they typically have. It'd be great if we could enjoy that as well. And I'm worried less about, like, a reduction in fees, but more about priorities, but working together. I mean, I, I'm hoping it could all work out, but I, I'm wondering why, is it because of the, of the, so it sounds like it's because of the precedent. So maybe we could eventually earn one A status or, or something like that. But it's not because of the, of, I think we're above sixty percent, uh, easily. Maybe not team by team, but certainly as an organization.
As a whole.
But I think it's in the spirit of tier one. It's not open enrollment, it is a tryout, but the spirit of it is community. I mean, it's, it's, it's that it's a competitive league, you know, it's, it's a.
I think that's what the definition comes in, it's a competitive league, where the one A is a recreational league. So it's recreational in spirit versus a competitive.
Why would that generate a priority difference, I wonder? And, and I'm, I'm in the interest of just conversation, not, not anything.
Do you take kids that have hardships? We take a lot of kids that have hardships.
Yeah, we do, I mean, as, if somebody asks, we give them free, we waive the fee. You know, and we do that routinely. We don't advertise it, but that's kind of the whole idea, that people that ask for it really need it. So, we, we've done that every year that I've been president, multiple, multiple times a year.
Currently eighty-five percent of Southampton players are on Hampshire United. The population for Hampshire United, when we retired, was sixteen percent. It's about eighty-five percent.
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me.
Does Hampshire United teams, separate from this policy here, generally have games and practices at the, at same time as SYAA? Or are they, I mean, or are they at different times?
Practices or games?
Or games, both. Are their schedules very similar?
Conversations that we've had with, with some of the SYA folks who came to our, our board meeting recently, it looked like they wouldn't conflict in terms of games, especially because of the field. I mean, the really big field that you guys have, they wouldn't use at all. So it would, if we weren't using it, it would literally go unused. So it doesn't seem like there'd be a conflict there at all. Some of the other smaller fields, we're gonna have to get a little bit creative about, but even there, it doesn't look like there'd be much of a conflict. Cause I think a lot of the really small fields, you'd put off to the side, and they're pretty tiny. So we would use, I think, the, the, the medium-sized field and the large field for games, maybe we'd have our, our practices elsewhere so that we don't tear up the fields, and also it would give, you know, a little bit less conflict in terms of the parking and so forth. And I think that would work out really great, so I don't think.
So if you were moved to the tier one A, wouldn't, it wouldn't cause conflict with SYA having first choice over which field or, you know, practicing?
I don't think so, no. And in spring, because they don't have any soccer at all, there are no conflicts whatsoever. And actually, that would be, that's something I really wanna bring up here, is this spring, we're very interested in using the fields, and we'd like to make whatever we can work. And very soon, we're gonna have to commit to dates that we can, um, actually say, yeah, here are limitations, when we can't have games scheduled, cause we have to give our, um, our field usage, um, regulations to the league that we're part of, and they then schedule all the games based upon when fields are available. So we'll have to do that pretty darn soon. Uh, we're hoping that, you know, maybe we can, we can do that based on good faith here and work out the money afterwards or something, but it's something that we're looking to do in a pretty short timeframe. And I don't think that'll get in the way of anybody, cause it's spring.
In the spring. Liz?
Yes. So, perhaps if this doesn't change, it doesn't look like it changes the fee at all, Mark, from the one tier to the two tier?
Right, right now, that's the way.
Would it be possible for the park commission just to have a discussion and perhaps at this time make Hampshire United one B? So that they still get priority over team, um, tier two teams, but at this point, SYAA, since they have a longstanding history with the town, they still maintain one A status? So that should there be a conflict between SYA, for some reason, and Hampshire United, that SYAA gets priority? And that way, there's a compromise here and more people leave happy?
To me.
It looks like everyone's gonna leave happy. Can we make tier one B?
Oh, one B, I'm sorry.
Yes, one B?
Yeah.
Would that, would that make?
It would just change the tier two to tier one B, right?
No, it would leave tier two there, but just with the Southampton-based adult sport leagues, move, uh, the first bullet up under tier one B, right?
I think so, yes. Or you could actually just leave that bullet there and just put a second bullet up higher, cause the only difference is gonna be that, um, this one has the, must have a minimum of sixty percent Southampton residents, and the one above's gonna have an example of Hampshire United. So it's specifically.
Like your own bullet.
One B, Hampshire United.
You know, I, I did, you know, it may, I mean, that may work. We still have not adopted the policy.
So Mike, I guess I would suggest, can we take this back and talk about it and then come back again?
The issue is that we do wanna accommodate Hampshire United real quickly. So we bring some type of form to be able to start to put together a schedule based on the roster and the day out, cause it, you know, it's really just right now, you know, until we publish this, it, it really is a matter of, you know, the cooperation we've already had between groups, that's why we have an issue with that, so. But we still need to have some type of process in place, so, you know, we're already at the deadline, near the deadline for the spring of the season.
I mean, can we just let them go back after hearing our comments, figure it out and put it in place? I mean, we don't have to make a decision for them, I don't think.
I think the fee structure is more of the one number. And the semantics of one A to two is really, to me, that'd be the point.
I think it doesn't matter for one B or two, to be honest. I mean, if, if there's a one A, and we're gonna put, be put at one B or two, it doesn't, that doesn't matter, so we might as well, I mean.
Cause ultimately, I'm gonna be sensitive to seeing an offset eighty-five percent Southampton or something like that.
Does, does one of us really know what the restrictions are?
We can communicate to the league what days we can't play, and they won't schedule games there. So I think we can, but we have to know quite a bit ahead of time. You know, that's, that's the only issue. So, you know, if you want no games on Sundays, we can accept that, and we'll just let Lou know, no games on Sundays. So we can accept any kind of restrictions like that, it's fine. As, we just wanna make sure we don't get bumped for other things, you know, that's, that's all.
So, I can make a suggestion.
Thanks.
Um, since we're kinda all here, we have one more issue to talk to the select board about.
Before you do that, do you need any action on this from us, so that you can resolve this?
I don't believe so, because I think the park commission has the ability to adopt the regulations on its own.
Okay.
We just wanted to come before the, the select board were input and get a dialogue going here.
Now we're ready.
The only other thing I would say, Mark, is if you can get together some amount, how much it costs to repair the fields averaged, you know, talk to East Hampton and how they keep up their.
We have, Jeff has spent a lot of time on, on researching other communities, um, and Belcher Town is probably the closest to Southampton, and he's, he's done a lot of work on getting that figure together. Unfortunately, until we go through a couple of years, I don't think we're really gonna know.
But it'd be nice to, nice to sort of start building in the budget that covers the cost of liming and everything.
Correct.
And just come a ballpark number. If it's too much, then we can trim it down next year, but you need to put it in the budget so you have the money. So it sorta needs to be in your budget this year.
Right. And we're, you know, we're still hopeful that, uh, the town will give us some money in our budget and not take us out completely. Um, just because we may have some income from SYAA or someone else's source, Hampshire United, that they cut our budget down to zero, uh, because I think that would be not the right thing to do either. But what I suggest while people are here is that, uh, as long as maybe the break room is open or something like that, after we talk, um, with the board about the erosion issue at the park, then we could continue our meeting, cause we do have a quorum with the three of us, and invite Hampshire United and, and Tammy from SYAA together, and we can all sit down and talk about this further.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. So we also are gonna talk to the parks commission about the Conan Park erosion and the repairs that are needed. Is that you also, Mark?
Yes, that's me too, or us, actually. In December, we had an issue with the outlet structure at the pond at Conan Park plugging up, and there's an emergency spillway that goes around the earthen dam. And, uh, as a result of that, because of the heavy rain event and storm, we had a serious erosion problem happening there that caused quite a bit of damage to that earthen berm, uh, and so that it's really not a safe area to be around. And we wouldn't wanna have any children around that area. Randall got a call from the police department that there was an issue, that somebody, um, on a Saturday, reported the incident. Uh, he went right down there and they cleaned out off the grate, and it is functioning. Now, it's frozen, but as soon as the snow melts, um, we're gonna have an issue with it. So what I worked out, and, and we all talked to Randall about, and I believe you have a copy of this, is what it's gonna cost to repair the damage. And I have photos, if you'd like to see some photos of the damage that was done. Um, and there are two different areas that, uh, were damaged by this erosion. Um, the area number one is the emergency spillway, and we have an outline of work that needs to get done. Because Conan Park is typically a very wet field, springtime is not the time to do any repairs, you need to do the repairs when the ground is either frozen or in the middle of the summer when it's as dry as can be. Otherwise, you're gonna do more damage getting to that area than you would to try to fix it. So we felt that we didn't wanna wait until some, middle of summer, because it is a safety issue. For any children that might wander over there, uh, it's a big ravine and gully, um, and that's not a good position to be in. So, in discussions with Randall, we were hopeful to be able to take care of it this winter, knowing that anticipated the winter that we've had and the amount of time that the highway department has been out plowing and sanding the streets. Um, and I wanna just say that they've done a great job in doing that publicly, uh, for that, so. The other area is, is from stormwater runoff from the parking lot of the library that comes around and eventually gets down near the pavilion as you're driving in to the library. The library parking area is to the left, you go a little further in, there's another parking area for the pavilion. This area is to the left. And that takes runoff from the library's parking area and a little bit of runoff from that parking area there. And that has some serious erosion issues too. We feel that possibly that area, we could let go until summertime because not a lot of people wander over there. Um, it's mainly the area number one at the spillway, which is right next to the ball field that everyone plays on. So Randall came up, and I came up with an estimated cost of twenty thousand dollars to repair both of those areas. Um, and we both looked at each other and said, so where do we get twenty thousand dollars? So that's why we're here tonight, trying to figure out where to get those monies. Um, I did put an email into Virginia Ahart, um, relative to if any of those funds from CPA could be used to cover this repair. Unfortunately, Virginia didn't get back to me, so I haven't spoken to her, and I invited her to, to tonight's meeting, but, uh, she didn't, she didn't make it.
You have a breakdown of how much for each project?
Um, best gets, probably ten thousand of each, would be approximately the cost.
So one would have to be done the next month or so?
Correct. Um, and my only concern is that, you know, hopefully the weather's gonna stop, it's not gonna snow every Sunday, and that the, the highway department would have the time to devote to it, cause it's gonna take a little bit of time to.
Can they get to it now, or is it?
Yes. Oh, yes. The ground, you know, the ground is frozen, they can plow their way in to, uh, the facility. The easiest way probably to get there is off of Clark Street and going across the field. Um, but once the ground starts to thaw, we don't wanna go across that way, because that's the ball field, and that's gonna ruin the field. Uh, the other option, which I, we don't wanna do, is, um, come in from the Conan Park, the pavilion side, and go across that way. But, if you do it that way, you gotta go across the earthen dam with heavy equipment, and we want, we don't wanna be on top of it. We wanna work from the side of it. So the best solution is to come off of Clark Street.
Mark, I have a question. There was an erosion problem probably in oh-six, oh-seven at the bridge. Uh, do you remember that? Were you involved in that?
Yep, yes.
So, and my question is just, it's just a philosophical question. I know there's always been some drainage issues in that area. Are we, are we throwing, um, good money after, you know, to a spot that maybe we should move the park, um, if the natural erosions there are gonna continue to happen? The ravine's right there, um, the other waterway is right there. Is there, is this sort of like a, a non-ending battle to, to, to keep that area stable? Now that we have more acreage on Strong, I mean, could some of those play facilities like the.
I really hadn't thought of that, David, but, um, I don't think, I don't think we could eliminate Conan Park because of two things. I don't believe Strong Road is large enough to handle everyone from Conan Park and what potentially it was designed for over on Strong Road, it's just not physically big enough. Um, also, the park was donated, uh, by the Conan family, um, and I believe that would probably, um, you know.
With all respect to the, respect to all of that, but I'm just saying that it just, it seems like this is, this is not the, the first time I've had erosion issues at the park.
Correct. We have fixed them before, um, working with the highway department, um, and we've come up with some monies to fix some of the different areas. We have a third area that is not even on this wish list to do, that we've been watching and so forth, that has been fixed in the past, that's over, closer to Conan, or closer to Clark Street. Uh, you know, we, yeah, we've been trying to keep it up. Somebody asked me about, you know, just eliminate the pond, get rid of the pond. Uh, that, I'm not sure is a, an option that, that would work or wouldn't work because of different permitting issues and, and resource areas that are under the conservation commission. So, you know, somebody said, well, why do we need the pond there?
Is there a more permanent solution, some kind of retaining wall or something like that?
Uh, retaining walls, uh, would be more costly.
Right.
The, the dam itself, oh, probably, five or six years ago, the highway department armored the slope, the downhill slope with riprap and big stones. And since they've done that, it's held very nicely, and it's stable. The outlet pipe was repaired, so that water coming from the standpipe is working, it's stable, it's, it's, it's doing well. They didn't have the money to fix the emergency spillway, which is a grass spillway, in an area that is, you know, highly erodible soils, like David's talking about. So, by fixing that area with riprap, same format as what was done to the face of the dam, we feel that, that it won't be an issue in, in the future. It's still gonna be a maintenance issue to make sure that grade is clean, cause once leaves and debris cover it, then the elevation of the pond increases and goes around the spillway, so it's a policing, you know, activity, and it was unfortunately, um, a fall storm event when no one was really using the park, cause the weather wasn't conducive to using the park, and no one was using it except for, you know, the people that walk their dogs and walk through there, so.
I'm not su, so I'm just gonna move ahead. I'm not sure where we're gonna get ten thousand dollars from to fix this, and so I guess my suggestion would be, I think we really need to get ahold of Mrs. Ahart to find out if that's a, a feasible solution.
Mm-hmm.
Unless they have any other ideas, or we're gonna come up with ten thousand dollars in a month.
When's the last, when, when do you wanna have this work started?
When the ground is frozen.
Well, no, but I mean.
I mean, ideally, at this point in time, we hope to, you know, do it in March, uh, next month, coming up.
Is, is, is this, is this $10,000 for materials or $10,000 for hours or $10,000?
Both, hours and labor time and materials to buy the stone and to go in there with some heavy equipment and do the work itself.
And the, and the work is gonna be done by the highway?
Correct.
So, so with the, so could we write an IOU to the highway and just buy the, what we need, materials? And then we bring the price down to just, to get it fixed and then we'll sort of figure the funding out while the ground's frozen? I'm just saying, I just.
Go ahead, Heather. So I spoke with Randall earlier. Unfortunately, he was unable to be here this evening, but we talked about this issue. And I asked him about, you know, the calculation, $20,000, what he was figuring for labor and hours and the like. And he said, you know, averaging on average about $20 per hour per guy, about 40 hours a week for about four weeks is what you're looking at. So it's about $4,000 in wages a week. When he first sat down to this, he didn't realize that that would have to come out of his current budget because we don't have additional $16,000 hanging out somewhere. The $4,000 for whatever you need for supplies, I mean, he could probably swing somewhere from supplies that they have for whatever they'd put into the park in the first place. The problem is, it's just the, you know, can we afford to have four or five guys doing nothing but the park for four weeks and not on the roads? Because that's what they, that's what they'd be doing. Now, if you use CPA funds, the only problem with that is, according to Virginia, it would be a restoration project, it wouldn't be a repair project. So you're probably looking a little more work involved in the first place because, you know, like anything else, it's the idea, okay, we're gonna do this the whole way, not just part ways. We're not gonna Band-Aid it. We're gonna, you know, go back and see what we actually need to do in the first place. But hopefully that means it would last longer. It also would mean it probably costs a little bit more. And then the last problem is the fact that if you do a CPA project, you can't use highway department as your workers. So you're gonna have to go higher outside. So it is gonna cost more ultimately in the end if you go that direction.
Correct. It's gonna cost considerably more because if we use CPA money, then we're gonna have to get someone in there to do a design of what, how it's gonna be repaired. So that's upfront money for whatever that design fee is gonna be to do it. It's gonna be a delay that's not gonna happen this year. So, and it's gotta go out to competitive bid.
What about having a, what about using, you know, we have the stabilization funds and, you know, having a special town meeting, although it's getting later in the, in the year to to transfer some of that money to to get the job. I mean, that's why the money's there for rainy days and this is a rainy day event, isn't it? If it is a rainy day event. The money's there. I just have to get it out of the fund. You have to transfer the fund. No way to do that as an annual, as a, as a special.
It's up to the board. There's always a cost of having the special town meeting. So it's approximately like $300 in wages for the folks who have to staff the meeting. Then you have to make sure Norris is available, which I'm sure we could do and everything else.
Are there any other issues that you wanted to, as the board wanted to handle prior to the annual that we had to deal with? There could be other articles on a warrant to make it worthy to do and then we get this project done and maybe a few other things done.
What happens if we don't fix it while the ground is frozen? It waits and then what happens?
Well, we've gotta figure out a way to stabilize the area so no one goes in it.
So no one gets hurt.
No one gets hurt. So it's a liability for the town.
Yeah, so it's even more.
You know, it's a known safety issue. And it's a liability for the town. So, you know, it's, it's a matter of trying to figure out a way to keep kids out of there or adults, whoever, that might get hurt.
So if the annual meeting's in May, one of the options would always be to see, as long as Randall has enough funds in his budget to cover him through May, that if it was the board's decision to go ahead and have Randall have highway workers, they remember it's gonna be about four weeks for both projects, so maybe one project at a time. But if he was to work on it and he had to come up with the wage money and the supply money, then to reimburse his budget with the operating stabilization funds come the annual town meeting in May so that he can finish the rest of the fiscal year.
That's, that's unreasonable. That is a reasonable way of doing it because it really needs to be done. Now, like I said, this is not the first time I've been involved with an erosion problem there. We had to get conservation involved last time as well. They.
Yes, they're on board with it.
They're on board with it.
I've discussed it with them. They are aware of the issue. And they have said that, you know, it needs to get repaired and they're on board with whatever has to be done to do that work.
So what will we have to do to give them the go-ahead to start? And if, if it's gonna be four, is it four weeks to do both projects or four weeks to do the, the major project?
My understanding from Randall, and remember, this is a guesstimate. It's like anything else, you get involved in something, it could be a lot more work to it than they initially thought. But his guesstimate today was four weeks for the whole thing. But I can double check with them tomorrow and see if he can give us a little more detailed schedule and more detailed on the actual hours and also the cost of all the materials than just what we have here at the, as the estimate.
But we're talking about doing only half this project now and the other half during the summer, right?
Yeah, I think, I think we can do it that way.
That'll get you by the town meeting.
You know, we do have some monies for, for his manpower that we could exalt all our money that we have left and then figure out how we're gonna mow the grass through these nice people that are gonna give us $1,900 or whatever. Short-lived, but, you know, so we, there is that option. I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's a good way to do it.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to move forward to at least get the, the part that needs to be done now done. And it's too bad Randall wasn't here tonight. I'm sorry.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Do, do we need a motion?
He just made one.
Do we, do we need one though?
I would say probably to allow Randall to get started and spend his money. Further discussion, I guess I would say I, I'm hesitant to say without talking to Randall and getting his input in it, although I understand the urgency to get it done. I'm just a little hesitant without, you know, seeing how he feels about fronting all that money and hoping that it gets replaced in May.
That's why I don't think we need a motion. We just want them to talk with Heather and talk to Randall and see if he can do it and come back to us whether yes or no. It's in his budget, so we don't have to approve it, per se.
Well, I mean, I just want to make sure we move forward with it. Don't want someone to get hurt.
Right. So if you don't have a motion and then takes you a week or two to talk to him, then that puts you two weeks out to start. If you have a motion and you talk to him next week, he could feasibly start the next day.
The other day, it takes the burden off of Randall for spending the money. We're saying spend your money for this and then we take the grant for it.
So there's a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll get together with Randall tomorrow and I'll try to reach out to him and see what we can do. All right, thank you.
Good. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to a joint meeting with the Public Safety Complex to talk about feasibility and preliminary design presentation of the Public Safety Complex.
Liz, did you want to give people a chance to head out and we can set up the projector?
Oh, sure. We need to set up the projector for the presentation, so we will resume our meeting in five minutes at 7:53. Ready, go. With the joint meeting with the Public Safety Complex to talk about feasibility and a preliminary design. Charlie.
Good evening. My name's Charlie Konecki. I live on Valley Road in Southampton. I'm the chairman of the Public Safety Building Committee. And we're reached a point in time where we need the board of selectmen to give us direction if they feel that where we're going is correct or satisfied in getting this thing done. We're gonna have a presentation from Curtis Edgen from Carol and Beane Company, excuse me. And what it'll be basically is the concepts and layout for the Public Safety Complex. And once we do this presentation, we need a formal vote of the selectmen to say yea or nay, this is the direction we need to go in. And then from there, we will be going back to the table to do floor layouts, cost analysis, everything else that goes with this. This is a culmination of meeting with Conservation, Historic Commission, and other groups in town to see if we can satisfy the concerns everyone had on different issues. So with that, I'd like to introduce Curtis Edgen and do this as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Curtis Edgen, I'm a principal with Kayla and Beane Associates, the architects that were selected for the project last fall. Some of this presentation you saw last December and there've been multiple meetings, so the presentation has kinda evolved over the past couple of months. So we're putting slides in, we're taking slides out, but we're trying to give you a executive summary, if you will, on where we are today. So, a- as we discussed back in December and through the fall, you're all familiar with the site and some of the challenges which are present here, not the least of which is a proposed public safety facility with emergency apparatus and, and emergency responders competing with the public who are coming to Town Hall and the senior center. And that is a significant safety issue. Did the multiple studies through the year on how we, you're, you're all familiar on how we arrived at this particular site or this site was established, let's say. We did not arrive at it. That was arrived at prior to engaging our firm. But you can see some of the issues there and, and some of the concerns that are being addressed by this project and the site. The existing fire station facility, which was originally a schoolhouse constructed in the 1800s, abandoned in the early 20s and has morphed into a fire station as we know it today. You can see the driveway coming up to the senior center in Town Hall parking and you can see some of the topography challenges that are going to be, need to be addressed by this project. And looking at the back of the public, of the fire station, you can see the original building as well as the, the flanking wings, the, the wetlands and some of the topography here. So those, those are some of the challenges and things you're all aware of. Obviously, there's concern about the condition of the original building, a lot of the modifications that have occurred in the 40s and the 70s and some of the structural concerns of the As you saw back in December, you know, why is it that, you know, what's wrong with our present facility? Well, there's a lot of things and the, and the presentation in December outlined the, the challenges of both the police station and the fire station, so the old Town Hall building as well as the fire station building. And, and these are some other mo, what we're terming modern public safety facilities. October, November, the, the evaluation of the site, the analysis of just trying to put some building blocks and what would fit on the site, staying out of the wetlands. And some schemes we were able to evaluate to see if we, we could work around the present fire station. Others, well, Charlie, I can't get this to work, but there it is. So some where we worked in conjunction with the existing fire station, some where we were behind it. And, you know, there are pros and cons. And so, so there was a, it was a long process and a lot of evaluation. One of the things that we have to identify since, since the site includes the, the present fire station building, basically there are four options. We can avoid it altogether with the new public safety facility. And you can see some of the pros and cons there. We can incorporate the current fire station within and as part of the new complex. And there are some severe structural limitations there that we'll hit at, hint at a little bit later. We can perhaps relocate the existing fire station because it's exactly in the spot where we need, we need to be able to get apparatus in and out or potentially raise the building and, and pay homage to it through some detailing in the new facility. So, all right, Charlie, why is it? I don't know.
Did you break it?
I don't think I did. Nope, let's keep going with that. Okay. So one of the schemes which was, which worked, an early scheme, it was behind the present fire station. The challenges with that, of course, are once you come out of the apparatus, you either go around or through the present fire station. So that particular scheme almost dictates that the original building go away. And, and of course, you know, we're trying to stay out of the wetlands and the buffer zone here. And we want to make sure that we separate the circulation for the public as, from the emergency response apparatus. So quickly going through another scheme that was evaluated was trying to incorporate it within. And pros and cons with that, well, it's, it's a nice, kind gesture. Financially, we don't see that being as a, an option. You will put a lot of money in because the, the building code requires that essential facilities, and that is what this is, a fire, police, ambulance, this is right from the building code, is what's called a category, occupancy category four. There is no way that a unreinforced masonry structure built in the 1800s will comply with the seismic requirements that are present today. So there will be an enormous, it, it wouldn't be a, I'll say a renovation, it would be a reconstruction to make that comply. So that pretty much precludes that option. So as we were evaluating that, we also met with the two departments and started talking about what their present needs are and, you know, what, what size facility is really appropriate here. We heard some early numbers of anywhere between 15 and 30,000 feet. Well, basically, you know, using a, a similar model from, from another community in central Massachusetts, a rural community, 6,000 residents, very similar, very similar demographics to Southampton. And we did some compares, comparison and contrast with their program and, and what goes on in Southampton and understanding how small departments, volunteer departments with, with the fire department and small police departments, how they function, sir.
Excuse, was that Granby that you were comparing?
No, no. That, that happened to be in Ashburnham.
Ashburnham, okay.
Granby's another somewhat similar exercise as well, yes. So anyway, you're looking at something of 20,000 to 21,000. And we took the program space, we plugged in a circulation factor of, you know, kind of a rule of thumb at this point of 15,000. So if you say you're, it's a 21,000 square foot facility. So from that, we started developing, you know, how would that lay out? Police, your fire, your combined, your shared spaces of, of your dispatch, which serves as the gatekeeper to the two departments during the day. And, and it's the, it's the point of contact if somebody was coming in an emergency, let's say in the evening. You want somebody who's driving down the street and needing emergency services, you want to be able to find that contact. You don't want them to come in the back door and so, you know, it has to be recognizable. Another similar floor plan, just it moved around. And as you can see, all these floor plans, you know, please note, the final building footprint will vary in response to the program and site requirements. So right now, we're just trying to see what will fit on the site and how best to site the facility and some of the challenges. The actual floor plan, while we're headed in a particular direction, you know, don't, don't feel that this is a cast in stone. That would be developed after you select the designer and you fund the project and move through the, the design development and, and construction document phase.
Is there a Sally Port for it?
There is, there is. In this particular option, which was a couple of weeks ago, again, many steps to get here, but what we were trying to do, again, stay out of the wetlands, avoid the, the current fire station. This particular one, single story plan worked well from, well, it worked, had its challenges from a, a civil engineering perspective. Programmatically for the police and fire departments, it didn't work because a single floor plan means the floor, the, the floor plate needs to get bigger. We don't have a lot of real estate. While we do have a significant amount of land there, you can see how, how large that building is with the apparatus and, you know, compare that to the Larrabee School. I mean, that's all apparatus there right now and, and, and support facilities. But it's not much larger than what you have swirled around town right now. It's just effectively designed so that there's room to circulate around the vehicles. Remember those slides from December where we showed people, you know, where the turnout gear was right up against the trucks and the safety issues there? This is. This is allowing for appropriate circulation and functioning. So while it worked, you know, as a single floor and circulating all the way around it, it didn't work programmatically, and we want to actually compress that footprint a little bit. So we kept going back to the drawing board, and this was, you know, an idea of how that might appear. At that point, we were responding to the Historic Commission's inquiry regarding the potential to incorporate that fourth option. If that present station cannot be reused, perhaps we can be respectful in the design of this facility and bring some of the detailing over. So while it worked okay from a civil perspective, it didn't work well in a programming perspective. We really do need a, if you, I'll call it a walkout basement, but lower level spaces for things like locker rooms and things that do not need to be on the main floor where the public would come. And so we, that particular plan in the last couple of weeks has morphed to a solution where this is a, we'll call it a two level, but it's a, a main floor, which would come in off the upper level, that's where your public would generally be, and a lower level, which has the apparatus bay and the ability to get in on the backside underneath. And it works from a civil perspective. You can see the original fire station still shown there in that grass island in the middle. You can see the separate circulation pass. The difficulty is, is you can't transition from here to here. That's a, that's a retaining wall of, I think, about 12 feet tall right now. In the final design, we would try and work away from that, move some things around. That, that's where the Sally port is. If we can get it a little bit further out, we might be able to do this with an embankment rather than the retaining wall. Some of those types of, of design moves, but right now, you can see where it's, we are able to construct the facility, stay out of the wetlands, essentially crossing where we are right now. This, this retaining wall here is slightly higher, but not much higher than the head wall that presently comes out right here for the wetlands, because this stream feeds through a culvert and empties at the head wall here and then goes out. So trying to stay, minimize work within the buffer. And, and so this works a little bit better, better, and it would also allow us to make that floor plate a little bit more compact. And a variation of what you saw earlier, but now showing that that apparatus bay is actually down lower, so that it's, you know, we'll call it lower level, basement level, and the building sitting up from behind. So the original structure, perhaps taking some cues off of the windows and the doors and start to incorporate those in the facade, and obviously, we would want to do the brick detailing and head in that direction.
Can you still get from the apparatus bay into the main building with it lowered like that?
Yes, you, when the...
The lower level?
Yeah, you wouldn't be taking vehicles, obviously, crossing back and forth, but, and that would work fine, actually, because in general, the upper level, the more public level would be your administrative functions. You would come down where you would have the turnout gear, your cascade, all the support spaces for the apparatus. So you want to keep those together, and you want to keep the administration on the public realm. So it gives a good separation, and you could put locker rooms, places where the public doesn't need to go, and as a matter of fact, you don't want the public to go, for police and fire locker rooms, mechanical rooms, storage rooms, a garage space for the police department if they were to impound a vehicle, not the Sally port. Sally, Sally port's on the main level.
Is there enough parking in the backside of the apparatus building for vehicles to turn and for the volunteers to show up with their vehicles to respond? Is there enough room back there for parking?
There, there seems to be, there are opportunities for some additional parking here that we would want to explore a little further. You know, I, we feel it's workable. We don't, again, we don't say this is the solution, but it's a direction, so you can start to see where the building might be sited and how it would work in conjunction with the present topography, you know, and respecting the wetlands as well.
But it is a drive-through bay, so I...
It is, it is. Quite often in a small department, while, while, even in larger departments, you may have a drive-through base, but the reality is, you end up going back to back, and they go in both directions. You put your second response, your second line of vehicles on the backside, and your primary response vehicle's on the front side. And that's pretty typical, we see that all, all the time. But there are opportunities if you have a larger piece of apparatus to come through. So that's kind of where we're at now. The timeline, you saw that in December, not much has changed, other than the fact that we are probably 30 days later than we wanted to be right now, as a result of trying to make sure we were addressing the concerns of multiple entities. And so ideally, by, by May, we'll have some numbers that have been presented to you, put out on the street, public discussion, after the town meeting, final designs through the summer, fall, leading up to bidding this time next year. Construction beginning in 2016, about a year plus for the construction. So the timeline would work, so by middle of 2017, about two years out from right now, is when you would be moving into your new facility. So as we discussed in December, you know, there aren't a lot of, well, we don't know of any federal or state grants out there, and that's been pretty much the story for multiple years now. So most of the time, you'll find in a municipality, the funding options, unless you have a lot of free cash, and, you know, that's not a problem most people have. The funding options include a prop two and a half override, which we understand are resistant to that, or a debt exclusion, which obviously retires once the project is paid for. It's not something that's permanently on the tax roll. And as noted, there will be some retiring debt, current debt, that might be able to offset the cost of this project. To what extent, that has to be established once the final footprint and the cost estimates are established. And then I think the last item was just the same slide you saw in December, questions, comments, email address, telephone.
So does that current design have the fire station in front of it or not in front of it?
It does.
Okay.
You mean the existing fire station?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
So that's my first question. Did the Historical Commission go ahead and find somebody to go and look at the fire station, decide whether it should stay, or whether they, and what was the conclusion of that?
My understanding through secondhand information is the Historic Commission had an engineer do an evaluation last week. I've seen no reports or anything. The reality of this project is, we need the current fire station until the new one is built, any way you slice it. So trying to incorporate a standing structure into a new design would be extremely difficult. One, because its placement is to the point where there isn't enough area. If you see the size of this building, if you were to slide this building down, that's not going to work.
I just wondered if the design of the new building would change if you knew the old building was coming down?
Probably the only thing that would change, if I'm just going to speak candidly, would be the fact that we'd probably look at putting more parking spaces on this side.
Which would maybe help if, when we have functions here? Because my concern with looking at that is that when there's things going on at Town Hall, how does that affect the fire department and police department's ability to respond? So if we knew it was coming down and there was more parking going to, then I would feel good about it.
Well, the way this is laid out, there's actually a second driveway for the fire department, and if the responders from the fire department, the volunteers in that pull in, they can pull in here to get to the apparatus. And there's parking in the back for the fire department now, but not for the general public.
Right.
There's a wall here or a berm that's going to develop. This additional parking is going to be for the police department, it's not going to enhance parking for this building.
But there is a lot of green space that if we wanted to, we can cut back and put parking spots there.
If we were to take the old fire station down, we would easily be able to take and add at least another dozen plus parking spaces.
But if we didn't take it down, with all the green space, we could put parking around it or in front of it, right?
Well, you don't want to put it on this side because you got your fire apparatus going from here.
Going, going this way.
This way here?
Yeah.
I mean, you can, you can pretty much do whatever you need to do there, John, because of the fact that it's a green space.
Right.
You know?
So there is capacity there.
The, the idea of this and the meeting tonight is to basically get the nod from the selectman that this is the approach we're going. This building here is a big question mark, and we don't want to stop the project, miss town meeting, because of the fact that we haven't decided what to do with the old fire station. Either way you look at it, we're going to have the old fire station for the next two years anyways.
Charlie, can I just say something? I, I really appreciate what you guys have done here. I always, always, when I looked, first looked at this when it was hanging in the selectman's office, I looked at it quickly, and I, I didn't realize that there was going to be a wall or a berm on the backside. I thought you would be able to, to go all the way around the fire station. Is there any way that can be gotten rid of so that you have access all the way around, just for whatever reasons? You have 360 degree driving access around the facility if you needed to, without having like a, a wall there? Is there anything, or?
Well, I know you're talking about this, David, and I'm not a civil engineer, as you know, but my understanding is the elevation changeover is so dramatic that you need a sharp cutoff point.
Okay.
Okay? I imagine that if you were to try to make a slope here, you'd be losing some of your parking space, you'd have a problem with access to your Sally port. I'm not an engineer, but...
Is having that retaining wall still functional to the fire department and police de, police department? It doesn't cause any trouble, not as far as you're concerned? How about you?
Just by the number of vehicle spaces, it definitely cuts down on, you know, our patrol cars would park and staff parking, as well as, you know, that actually, you know, come from the police department.
But the function of the police department isn't inhibited by having that retaining wall there?
Are you referring to the berm?
Yeah, the retaining wall.
No, no, not at the moment.
You also have to appreciate this is a work in progress. It could very well be that we end up talking about adding on some space in here. I don't know, but that's part of the discussion, is to try to make it a little bit bigger. I have a personal issue with the fact that we have a retaining wall that runs through here, and no easy access to this land, which we're going to have to mow and whatever. Not that it's going to look like a park, but it's still going to need some maintenance.
It'd be good for soccer people.
Well timed.
Okay. That said, but, you know, there's going to need to be some access there because this is all private property, so we can't come in that way either.
Now, a question from the last meeting we were at. This wall developed when the one-floor building got pushed together and you added a basement, because the plan before this allowed egress all the way around the building, correct?
Correct, because it was all at a single level, and it also had a pretty slope, a pretty steep slope out front, so there was some pros and cons here. The ability, the ability to drop down vertically, push the apparatus bay, also gives us access, I think that's a single floor solution. Charlie, you want to go the other direction? Allows us access underneath the building. And that, that's one of the things, I think we can do it without a retaining wall, but it still limits the ability to go a 360, you know, continuous, you'd have to come in from two different sides.
Now, that, and it was changed from one level to two because of the functionality for the police department, right? I mean, it looked better as one level, but be able to function in there wasn't as good as two.
It's, it's setting up the building itself and how it functions.
Right.
What needs to happen on the main floor and the way a small department works is that police has, the dispatch also assists with cell monitoring, and a small, from a police department's perspective, you want to have the majority of your operations on a single floor, you don't want to be on multiple floors. Your support spaces, your, your long-term storage, your perhaps impound for a vehicle, your locker rooms, those types of things can be away from the public. As a matter of fact, we moved the, the community space up.
Well, if you're not on the microphone, the general public can't hear you.
That's not a bad thing, is it? So, so, you know, it's kind of a two-edged sword, it's a balancing act, and so we were able to, you know, and while the, the plan itself hasn't constricted yet, obviously, we do want to do that so that we keep those non-public functions.
Out of sight.
Out of sight in a way, and where our public, we can condense that on the upper floor. The apparatus and those support spaces on the lower thing, the, the public doesn't need to be there, so, you know, it, it works.
So that wall's a compromise between...
Correct, and, and we don't know that it's going to be a wall. Right now, it's shown as a wall, but that's just what's happened in the last two weeks, and we don't have a final plan, which, that plan will work very hard to get rid of walls, because I'm, I'm not a real big fan of retaining walls. See, if, you know, embankments are better, if we can do it in other ways than, than walls, but it's just not developed yet.
Can I have a question regarding handling of somebody in custody? So some of the places I've visited, the Sally ports were able to bring the, someone in custody right into the booking area where they get printed and they get photographed, and then the cells are right there. With, with the, with dispatch being upper level, and the Sally...
Again, on that floor plan, it's the same level.
It's the same levels?
It is.
Okay.
We require, for, for our police department in particular, we rely on the dispatch to do the cell monitor checks.
But I'm just saying, when you come in from the Sally port, are you going to have to go upstairs?
No.
Or is it, where is it? Is that the blue light? Okay, it's right there. So they, they would come around from the front side of the police station above that wall?
Correct, but that wall that you're seeing...
Is on that, right at that, okay.
...right along this line, so they would be coming in this way, coming in...
So not bringing a handcuffed person upstairs or downstairs? Okay.
Out of the Sally port, into the booking area, into the detention area.
Two cells, one cell?
It's actually three.
Three cells?
We want one, juvenile cells and adult cells have to be sound and site separated.
Okay.
And you want to have a cell per, of the known males.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Do the police get, cars get housed in the same garage as the fire trucks and ambulances, or are they outside?
They're outside and home. We put together, we, as a police department, you know, as a police department, we put together, if you will, a wishlist. And I spoke with Curtis and explained what, as a police department, what we're looking for, and we're not expecting, in most facilities, a lot of the cruisers are parked outside. There will be a garage, you could put a, a car in the garage, provided that it's not full with, you know, something for evidence. However, you know what, there could be built like a lean-to, or for instance, where that retaining wall was. Something just really to keep the snow off the cruisers is really what it is, you know?
And is that involved in there or not?
It is not, it's, it's something that, you know, like, this is just a very preliminary floor plan, and, and actual site plan.
Doesn't, well, if you turn the lights off at Ashburnham, that particular facility, again, similar, upper level, lower level, public up above, that area right there, that covered area, is a photovoltaic array, so that capturing the sun, using it to offset some of the energy costs of it. It's a carport.
And they use it as a carport. We did actually, we actually did a site visit to Ashburnham because the demographics were very, very similar, and the, that police department, its facility itself, speaking on the police department's side, is very conducive to what Southampton would need.
Did you go to Granby to see Granby's?
I have not been inside Granby, no, but I have been there.
So can we look at the road, where the road will come into the public safety complex?
Sure.
Because the entrance will be different than it is now, is that true?
Definitely.
And so what does that do to the end of East Street and the turn there? Are we going to need a street light or something? Does it make the turn even worse than it is? Are we going to need a street light or something? Does it make the turn even worse than it is now?
Well, right now, probably would improve upon what, what's there, because right now you come in approximately there. So if you came out of East Street, you come and then you take this hard left and come back around to get here. What we're trying to do, and this is a one-way flow still, like what we have today. You come in, the public would come in here rather than where the-
And so is that directly across from East Street?
Uh, right now it is not, but that's obviously something that needs to be further studied.
Right. I'm just trying to picture the cars shooting across the street without some sort of light there in that corner, I guess. I'm trying to visualize it.
Can we buy the house that's for sale and tear it down?
It's beautiful inside, let's not tear it down.
Part of the discussion has been to put a hazard light here that's activated by dispatch when fire apparatus is leaving.
I just wonder about regular residential cars pulling in there? I mean, I know, like, when you come up East Street now and you want to get to the town hall, you turn right and then you quickly stop and you turn left, or you go really fast if it's, if the entrance is closer. Well, I'm just saying, there's cars you can't see, so is it going to be more difficult to get in there?
Actually, the entrance to town hall is going to be a little bit, well, it's, theoretically, this is going to move a little bit.
Not much though.
It'll, it'll-
There's trees in the way. I don't think you can move it over too much going towards the southern direction.
We could cut the trees down. They're nice trees, man.
Mrs. Willones.
My question is, how are you dealing with the trucks, the eighteen-wheelers that are coming down that have missed their turnoff up in Westfield and coming down and are now currently trying to turn around in this parking lot here?
That's an enforcement issue. Yeah, that's an enforcement issue. You just put a sign up.
That, that issue is even happening at my farm on Valley Road, where they take Valley Road before they even get to town. I mean, that's, that's a constant problem throughout. It's an enforcement issue. I mean, you could certainly put a sign up that says no U-turns, but-
But if the police station's right there and it's, hey, it's a sign, I mean, it's a little different. And then the other question I have is, what's the historical society your commission want to do with the old town hall?
Fire station?
The old town hall.
Well, let's focus on the fire station and the public safety complex right now.
Well, I mean, once we get to, I mean, if we're going to move the police, then we're going to have an abandoned building, and what would they want to do with the, the abandoned building?
Well, let's have that conversation after we decide to build the public safety complex. Just saying. But, so nobody, the police department doesn't, you don't see a trouble with the road, East Street, and getting in there? I'm the only one that thinks it's a problem?
I think it'll be, you know, if you're looking, say you're pulling out of that, the actual, the property, onto Route Ten, I think you're going to have more of a line of sight as a result of that new, new driveway.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll stop thinking about it.
Still one way, like, right now.
For years, we've had trouble with the dual driveway.
Right.
Serious trouble, so.
So this will be one way, and the only way out will be onto the street over here?
Maple.
In and out, and that's it?
So the police cars will go out the back way? Is that what we're saying?
Off, out to Maple Street and-
Can the police cars come out the other way?
The police cars could theoretically go this way. Obviously, if it's a police emergency and they want to go the other way, I'm not going to jump out in front of them.
If somebody's pulling in, it could hurt.
I'm still not jumping out in front of them.
So Charlie, in, in this plan, you know, have you, you know, we, we put the Christmas lights up in those pine trees. Are you considering taking down that pine tree?
No.
Okay.
I, I like it.
Take it down.
No, no, no one's talking about taking the Christmas trees down.
After seeing this design, is there anything that the fire department or the police department doesn't see that they still want to see or concerns that they have?
We've both been involved in it.
From the beginning.
I know, so I think it's pretty accommodating. I think there's going to be some changes along the way that'll, you know, rolling these are cost benefit.
The only thing I, I want to be sure on is the, the turn-in radius to access the drive-through or if they have to back up, because you don't want to have to cut them trucks around real sharp.
Well, that was what I was saying, is that if you're parking out there and the rig comes back and he just doesn't take his line of sight just right, he's going to back up, back up, and, and swing around to get in.
I want to see the return in radius is all the way here.
They actually, they actually did a turning radius evaluation on this, but we'll show them right on the plan.
Sergeant Ellingsworth, you don't have any other concerns about it?
No, no, I, I think, I expressed earlier with the, the parking for the staff and so forth and, you know, possibly the position with the Sally Port, however, that's something that's nothing set in stone as of right now.
Okay.
Our plans really haven't been discussed.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any other questions about this concept? Dr. McDougall?
No, not at all.
No. So at this point, we need to decide, where do you want to go? Do you want to see something different? Do you want to start over again? Do you like this?
Well, I, I-
You know, where, where do you want to go with this?
I haven't been a part of this in the beginning, way back, and having made several site visits. It's, it's, I've seen it being a very long process, and I've gotten to know the people that are on the, the development committee and, and their dedication and thoroughness to this. And so I would support the plan as it is today. Obviously, the, the back embankment can be looked at at some point, depending on funding, maybe that can be changed a little bit. The parking can be tweaked, but I would make a motion to support this preliminary plan and move forward on the project.
Is there a second?
A second for conversation.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Now, you're looking for us to give you approval on the preliminary plan so we could have something in place to bring to the annual town meeting in May?
Yes. Once we know that this is the direction you need to go in, we're going to focus on this, tweak the things that came up, tweak the things that come up from the fire and the police chief, and move forward so we have a package for town meeting.
With a cost attached to it?
There'll definitely be a cost. The hope is the cost will be what, a month from now?
I'm good.
Any other discussion? There's a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What'd you say? Me too? Thank you so much for all of your hard work. It looks like a good plan, and I'm, I'm excited to see it start moving forward.
Thank you, Charlie.
You guys are very welcome. This has been quite-
Eye-opening.
In many different levels.
Great. Okay, so now, we're going to move on to our town administrator report in just one minute. I see a lot of paper in your hand.
Is she standing behind me?
Yes.
Not a good place to be. I can see that.
We're only up to two?
Been here a long time. Last time I was reading that address, remember?
Yes, I do. See you, Charlie. Nine items, we're on number two. Let's keep going there, lady.
We're going to pass over all of four already.
We'll work on it.
You ready for me?
Ready.
All right, I'll try to, I'll try to be very succinct with my town administrator report for this evening. Volunteerism, just an update on things. Norris School Committee, we currently have one interested candidate in the position. For Board of Health, we actually currently have two interested candidates. We're preliminarily looking at setting up a joint meeting with the Board of Health and with the Board of Selectmen for March tenth to meet both candidates with the Board of Health and to appoint. We're still waiting to hear back from both candidates first to make sure they're both available on this evening to do so. And then at that point, we'll also confirm with the Board of Health to make sure the two current existing members are available at the same time, but before we get too excited on coordinating something, we want to make sure everyone's available. Greenway Committee, they currently have one interested party. They are talking to them at the moment. If everything looks good, then you'll see that on your agenda at the next meeting to appoint for that position. The next thing is Cable, Cable Advisory Commission. It was something that we had once upon a time. We haven't had it a long time. We are up for renewal of our cable contract. We have spoken with Kathy over at ECAT, and she has strongly suggested that it'd be a great idea if we reestablished the commission. She, she sent me a quick email just to establish what was happening with this. She said, "I know that the license renewal activities should start soon. Have you given any thought to the formation of a cable advisory board? I would be happy to serve on the board in, in ex officio capacity," as she's not a resident of Southampton. What do they do? So I'll see if I can explain a little bit based on this email, and then if I have any questions, I'll let you know.
Got it.
What I can answer on that. "I have already worked with the town's cable lawyer, a cable lawyer for towns and charter's government rep. A cable advisory board can serve the interests of the town by maintaining some general oversight to the negotiations, coordinating public hearings, and collecting data regarding the consumers' interests. I'd love to schedule a meeting to discuss the subject further, so let me know," and that's what she goes on from there. But essentially, it's a, it's a body to take over the process of the negotiations with the cable or be the spearheading group to do so. Cable negotiations, it's not up for a couple of years. Usually, it starts a few years ahead of time, which is very interesting. When the main things that we get out of our cable contract is actually the PEG access funding, which helps us give, you know, the ability to have Paul here this evening to tape tonight's meeting, also to tape other meetings in town, tape our town meetings when folks want to go to them and say, hey, can we tape this program? That's what gives us the funds to do so. And I also put it later on the agenda as well, but if the board does decide that this is something they're interested in, just establishing, saying that there would be interest of the Board of Selectmen to reestablish the Cable Advisory Committee with three to five members.
Do you need a liaison from this board?
I don't think we would necessarily need a liaison from the Board of Selectmen, but essentially, Cable Advisory Committee would report back, and we can get a formal definition of the board from other communities. We did have one again once upon a time, I think, at the last time the cable contract was renewed. David, do you remember that?
Yeah, I think Mr. Creviere was on it and maybe, I think, I think Jean-Pierre Creviere was on it. That was when, that was a, that we actually should have had a stronger cable committee at that time, because what had happened is the cable company was violating their own contract, and what they were doing is that they were only allowed to charge so much installation regardless of the distance from the road to the home. And what they were doing, they were charging thousands of dollars to hook these people up, which was in clear violation of the contract. And about nine homeowners actually got that money refunded, but it's, in, in retrospect, it would have been nice to have had more, you know, citizens to get that money back, you know? But other than that, the, the cable contract itself is a very basic contract. It's a non-competitive contract. We just can't, there's no one else wanting to come in to take the, the, the services for the town because of the cable and everything else that they would have to, to, to buy. So I think what you hit upon is the only thing you really sort of have negotiated is the ECAT stuff. Otherwise, it's just pretty straightforward.
So the next item I have on here is revenues. Last week I updated the Board of Select, or last meeting, updated the Board of Selectmen on the status of the budget for FY fifteen, where we were at this current point in the year. I left out revenues because they hadn't been updated yet, so they've been a little, brought a little bit more up to speed. This is where we are currently, after just taking a look at about the first page of the revenues, because that gives us a decent summary. Under taxes and excise taxes collected, we're mostly on par with where we were last year. Overall, we've collected about seven million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars compared to last year, where at this time we had only collected seven million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand. Supplemental taxes, boat excise and meals tax are all ahead of schedule from last year, so that's good. Other departmental revenue is behind from last year. We had seventy, we have seventy-four thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars right now collected. As opposed to last year, we had a hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars.
What's the difference?
A lot of this stuff on the other departmental is user fees. So in other words, if you buy a license or vital, you pay a fee for the vital. Building, if you're building a property or you pull a certificate of occupancy, you pay the fee. So it depends on what services are being utilized, which ones aren't. Alcoholic beverages, you get a liquor license, you pay a fee. Certain ones are a pyre, so ahead of schedule right now are alcoholic beverage licenses, other licenses, Board of Health, and the planning board earn amounts overall in percentages compared to the total taken in from last year at this time. So-
We had a problem with just, with new growth, that new growth was always being sort of under-projected. Are we tracking that as well, that that's?
So new growth is much different than any of the stuff that I'm talking about.
But I mean, that ends up where we're taking in more revenue towards the end of the year, where we're getting all this free cash that we didn't expect to get, the five hundred thousand dollars. I'm just wondering, if we're marching through revenue, watching revenue, are we watching the new growth? Is the new growth actually fitting the prediction of the assessors?
Well, our new growth already came in. It was already verified by the Department of Revenue.
But are things trending the same? Is, is there a way to look back to make sure we're ma, the numbers are matching?
I, I believe they are trending the same. We did, you know, we came in lower than what it actually was by, I think it was about twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And when we did so, everything, tax recap and everything gets adjusted as such. I don't know if that answers the question.
No, I was just, I, I thought there was a miscue with our, our free cash this past year. I was just trying to, to make sure if we're watching all the revenues that were, were, our predictions-
Well, you have to remember, a lot of revenue, some revenues, we can't, we can't control and we're not allowed to predict ahead of time. So if we have a grant and we know we're getting reimbursed for a grant, and we know we're getting some money back from the state, we're not allowed to predict it as part of our revenues coming in. Certain things, like, for instance, we originally had budgeted a couple of months ago at a special town meeting, seven thousand dollars for a cleanup on a property for the Board of Health. That seven thousand dollars is going to come back to us in free cash, because we got the Attorney General's Office involved, and they've now moved forward with the receivership of the property. So that being the case, we are no longer in the process of having to utilize that seven thousand dollars. So that seven thousand dollars will come back in free cash, and that's not something we could say, hey, we allocated it for this and we know it's coming back in free cash. We can't project those things.
Which departments are, revenues are not where they're expected to be at this point?
Well, right now, behind schedule, Treasurer Collector, and remember, the only thing they really collect over there are municipal lien certificates. And all you're doing is you're comparing really one year to the next year. So you're not saying they're drastically behind, but for instance, with the Treasurer Collector one, right now, we've collected three thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which is forty-six percent of what we've predicted that we're going to take in this year. And last year, under Treasurer Collector, at this time, we had collected four thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
So maybe that's a better question. Which departments are not where they should be at this point of the projection?
Well, that's, that's hard to say, and I don't think it's something that's fair that you can predict across the board, because everyone has things that come in at different times. So for instance, alcoholic beverages, if this was October, I would say this isn't fair. Liquor license season is November, so dog season is March.
Are there any things, are there any departments on there that are troublesome at the moment?
Well, it's not so much troublesome, it's just that they're behind, and behind isn't necessarily a bad thing. It's just to let you know where they are, and remember, these are user fees. So, you know, like municipal lien certificates. Well, if we're not doing municipal lien certificates, it's because people aren't filing them. It's not because necessarily that we're providing a poor service or we're doing less work in the treasurer's office than before. Same thing with the highway department, you know? If we're behind from where we were, like, right now, we're only in ten percent of everything we predicted that would be taken in, which is one thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
What department is that?
That's highway. Last year, we were at twenty thousand, so they might have had, you know, more subdivisions come in at the beginning of the year than they've had now, so they might have more work at that point in time, more-
We collect revenue through the fire department?
Fire department inspections, we have here, fire department inspections are at six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars, or thirty-five percent of this year's predicted. Last year at this time-
We're at thirty-five percent of what's predicted?
That we'd be taking in, yes. Last year, we were at forty-two percent, and it was the same amount total, so.
Okay.
The only one that's more troublesome, I guess, would be the police department. Police department last year was at ten thousand dollars that they had taken in for revenue. This year, they're only at four thousand dollars.
Obviously, they all add up, and maybe you were talking when I was bringing this up, but motor vehicle excise, when, what's our season for that?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Motor vehicle excise?
Oh, that's up in the tax and excise section.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's only at eighteen percent, so is that a seasonal adjustment? We're going to be-
Let's see.
We're off six hundred and five thousand dollars?
Motor vehicle excise, last year, we were at sixteen percent.
Yeah. What did it end up at the end of the year?
So, actually, we're higher this year than we were last year at this point in time.
But what did it end up at the end of the year? Did it get up to that 100%?
Last year, it ended up at, let's see, last year, we predicted $745,000. This year, we predict $740,000.
Right.
So, we predict slightly under, but we've already collected 134. Last year, at this time, we only collected 124.
But did we make up to 745 last year?
I don't, I don't have that final figure in front of me. I only printed two reports of comparable numbers.
Okay.
So, I had exactly to the same date.
So, that's 605,000 below budget right now, but will we make it?
Right, okay. Go ahead, keep going. So, I think that covers me. Plumbing, Town Clerk are all about the same as last year, more or less. Budget update. So, we have almost everyone scheduled at this point. The major departments had to be reworked a bit so that we couldn't get away from having to be at a Board of Selectmen meeting and a Finance Committee meeting at the same time. School Department is still March 3rd at 6:00 p.m. The Highway Department, we moved to March 12th at 6:00. Fire Department, March 16th. I think that worked for a quorum of the Finance Committee.
What was on the 16th?
March 16th at 6:00 p.m. That is Fire. And then, March 17th, the next day, St. Patty's Day, is the Police Department at 6:00 p.m. Okay, hold on.
Okay.
School Committee, schools are on...
March 3rd.
Highway on the 12th.
Yep.
Fire on the 16th.
Yep.
Police on the 17th.
Yes. Any other questions on budgets before I move on to my next?
We talked about the revenue, but the expense side, is the other side to it?
We did the expense side at the last meeting.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's a balance, because a lot of departments are well ahead on the expense side.
So, one thing we are doing when we're meeting with departments this year, and it was a great suggestion from one of the Finance Committee members, was to actually try to look at an all-funds budget. So, if a department pulls in grant money, or if they pull in revenues from fees, or vital, anything that they bring in money for, we look at everything, so you can see what the entire department is worth. So, what comes in the door and what goes out the door.
Being two-thirds of the way through the budget year, are we doing any projections on where we're going to end up? Because there's a lot of discrepancies on both sides.
I think as far as the expenses go, when we looked at them before, everything looked okay. The only thing that was slightly over so far looked like communication wages were a little bit out of whack. Everything else seemed to balance.
There's a number of them out of whack. If you're looking at 67% right now, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, but you, it depends on what it is. If it's 100%, most of the time, you're going to ignore it, because it usually means it's because they had to pay upfront for software. You have a few things that might be slightly higher. I know we have, the other thing I think I mentioned last week is I went over any of the discrepancies of the last meeting for things that seemed odd, like it shows legal fees was 107, which isn't true. What happens is most of the money's encumbered in a purchase order that hasn't caught up to the accountant's office yet. So, you have certain things that are in purchase order that just, they weren't taken out of the purchase order. Instead, they were taken out of the regular account, making the account go negative.
I think on average, though, John, I think you want to look at wages. I think if wages seem to start to get out of line, because that's pretty predictable, and that's probably one of the biggest line items for any department. So, if someone, right now, going into the third quarter, is at 90% of their wages, then there's an issue, because they're paying too much for overtime or something's going on.
Yeah, I guess what I'm concerned with is, you know, the 5,000, 10,000, 15,000, all sneaks up at the end of the year, and all of a sudden, we've got 200,000, and it'll be too late to react to it.
Well, my report two weeks ago, one of the things I mentioned is, you know, some of the departments were higher, and I think I explained why that was. For instance, the Town Clerks was higher, because we didn't project for the special town meetings or special election. And when you do that, every time you do one of these things, the costs, different cost, special town meetings, for instance, they may only be like $300. However, if you do a special election, now you have to get the cost of ballots, now you have to do the programming. So, you know, you're already up at several thousand. Now, you have to get the poll workers. Everything else starts adding up to the cost of the...
Yeah, I'm not saying they're not expensive.
And that wasn't budgeted for last year, so she's going to be over.
But we still have to figure out how to pay for it at the end of the year, I guess, is my concern. So, we need to plan ahead.
Mm-hmm. Any other budget questions for me? Okay. Annual Town Reports, so they're due next Thursday. If you have trickled in, we are working on a professionalized format this year that hopefully will be very user-friendly, we're hoping. And if not, we'll try again next year. Auditors. The auditors have arrived and are here this week. Treasurer and accountant have been busy with them. They will give me an update on Thursday as to where things are before they leave. Last piece is a new substation for electricity. So, WEMCO has a Gunn Substation. They are actually, WEMCO, by the way, is now Eversource, for anyone who hasn't seen all the advertisements, newspaper articles, website, everything else. And Eversource reps will be here at the next meeting on March 10th to discuss a little bit about the Gunn Substation and also what's going to be happening. They're going to essentially change the wiring a little bit, and they're going to put in a couple of new polls on Gunn and Coleman Road. We'll have a poll hearing on March 24th for both of these locations. But they want to give information to both Board of Selectmen, and I also suggest it'd be great to give information to the general public, so that they know what's happening and why they're going to be seeing Eversource trucks for a little bit while when all this is happening, and give folks just a timeline of what's going on. Liz, that's all I have.
Okay. Next, we have Select Board Updates and Liaison Reports. I just slid down a piece of paper to David that Heather's been asking all boards and committees to fill out. It says, it's just an organization, a way to get all of the contact information for each boarding committee on one sheet of paper. So, it's listed out, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Clerk, and then two spaces underneath. So, David, if you could take line four and fill in your information and pass it back down, then I will give it to John and Jackie. If you could fill that out and give it to Heather, that would be helpful. School Committee meets tomorrow night. I'll be there at 6:00. If anybody else wants to come see what they're talking about, school calendar, budget. They did have somebody that's interested in being on the school committee, because there was an open space, so that's positive. They won't be operating short-staffed.
That's Norah's School, right?
Norah's School, yep. What else did I do? Let me see, hold on. I had a PQB meeting, which went well. We had some questions and with a PCF from the Police Chief. We called him. He came over. He explained it. He was very helpful and nice. We didn't have any trouble with that. And then, I had a Finance Committee meeting tonight, which I'm glad to be on the liaison to the Finance Committee now. I'm not sure I, how I feel about it right before a Board of Selectmen meeting, because I think my blood pressure was a little bit higher than it normally is tonight. But still, great. There are some questions. I think going forward, that the board needs to address some changes to the PCF form that need to be talked about, like perhaps a spot to have the accountant sign off that says there's actually money in the budget before you make a change. Maybe...
Is that up to the department head to approve that?
To know that. But if you're going to put this form through all these different people, it just seems like, you know, maybe if you're submitting a PCF, you should be in the room to answer the questions, because I think oftentimes, people assume that when you don't sign it, so for example, we didn't sign the Police Chief, and it didn't happen this time, but it has, we don't sign it, and then it sits in a mailbox, and then people think that you're trying to pass it off or over, you know, not pay attention to it. But if you were actually in the room when you submitted the PCF, you would avoid all of that, because the questions that you had in the first place could be answered on that night. So, it's something to think about, or at least some sort of paragraph explaining why. I don't think the actual paper answers all of the questions that it should. They were also talking about perhaps having a, maybe just a spreadsheet of all the grants that are out there, because for example, a PCF for the van driver came through for the COA, but it's a grant-funded position. So, their question is, how is this being funded and from what line? They didn't know it was a grant-funded position, so they didn't sign it, and it went back to the COA. And then, you know, there's some miscommunication. So, I think from both the PQB and the Finance Committee, there are some changes that could be made to that form and something that we should look at. Anybody else have any liaison reports? I hope the answer is yes.
I was at the Public Safety Committee two weeks ago.
Okay.
And they presented that plan versus, and a variety of others, and we all agreed that it was the best plan, because it left the fire station sitting there. So, whether it gets torn down or not is irrelevant to going forward. That's, was the key to me. It leaves a lot of green space. I think we can convert to parking if we really wanted to.
It seems like we need some more parking after looking at that.
It does, because it only leaves that row. But that green space, and depending on what happens with the fire station, could be a lot of options.
Right. I have two more things. One, I'm also on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And so, if there's anybody that feels moved to take over, I love going to that meeting, but it often conflicts with school committee, which I find myself always going to before I will go to the Master Plan Meeting. So, if anybody feels like they could meet once a month on a Wednesday night, sometimes it's on a Thursday, I would really appreciate someone taking that over. And I, Heather and I went to, and David, went to the Lions Club Valentine's Dance. And if you have never been, you need to go in the future, because it was a lot of fun. And I never knew, like, when you drive by that sign, it says Lions Club, and you think you have to be a part of it, you don't at home. Next year, Valentine's Day, was at the Southampton Country Club, and it was awesome.
Yeah.
So, they did a great job, and I think more people should go. Okay.
Liz and Heather were stunning. You were stunning.
Just saying. We'd like to buy new dresses.
If you want to send me that information for the committee, next meeting, I'll go to it.
To the Master Plan Meeting? I will, thank you. Okay. So, next, we have open time for the public. Anybody?
George?
Sometimes I think we should have it at the beginning. Sometimes I think we should have it at the end.
Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. There's been a lot of talk on Mass Live about the Fire Chief car being parked out in the parking lot overnight for several days. How can that happen and it not be...
Truck, you mean?
Right here.
The truck you're talking about?
No. Fire, there's a...
Is personal?
Fire Marshal's truck. Fire Marshal's, thank you. How did it stay there that long and not be plowed out? Isn't there, don't we have laws about cars parking and not being plowed out and...
I don't have the answer to your question, but thank you for bringing that up, and we will find an answer for you and get back to you.
There's a lot of snow left there.
Thank you.
What will the Fire Marshal's car be doing here?
What is it doing there?
Yeah.
We'll find the answer out. Is there anybody else for open time for the public? We're going to pass over the continued business. The Board of Selectment policy is up for review. Town cell phones, we're waiting on a response from the Police Chief to see how many phones he has out there, and a few other things. They are continued, because Heather wasn't anticipating being here tonight, but we moved some meetings around, so she could. There's a conflict between finance meeting on Tuesday nights and Heather and I being available to go to that as well as this. So, we're trying to move that around. We don't have any appointments at the moment. We talked about the establishment of the cable advisory board. Is that something that the board wishes to move forward with? To go, give the go-ahead to reestablish that board, or did you want to do nothing?
I mean, you can post it. I don't, it's just, it'd be nice to get what the charge should be. And it's probably out there. It's probably in a file somewhere that says this is what they're supposed to do.
So, if you could find that out and bring that back to us to approve, and then we can post it.
You may want to give Mr. Crebier a call, because he'll give you some insight.
Charlie, are you on here?
He is, but he's an exec.
Oh, okay, sorry. I was going to skip ahead if you're interested. We have to schedule some annual reviews per employment contracts for the Fire Chief and the Accountant.
Just to let you know on that one, Liz, I did look them up. Last year, we did both of them in April. Their contracts do call for honor about the 1st of February, when the contracts were written. Last year, we got to both of them in April. I just threw in some dates here, just to give folks an idea of thinking about how they want to do this. Last year, we did take the Accountant first and then the Fire Chief, when we did these in order. Whatever the board wishes, but their contracts do call for an annual review.
I think that we should get through most of the budget conversations before we have this, and I also would like to have a conversation about how to conduct the Fire Chief's evaluation. And I, this isn't the first time I said I have a hard time telling you what the Fire Chief is doing right and wrong, not being in the Fire Department every day. And I think that we need to get some input from the staff of the Fire Department, because I don't think you're going to actually know what's going on over there without asking them. So, I think we need to come up with a way to do that tactfully and professionally, and then schedule a date. The Accountant, I think, I mean, I feel comfortable with that. I talk to her every day. Maybe some of you don't, but in that case, you have some time to think about how you're going to get your information together. And I also think we need to change the way we do it. Last year was the first year we've used that form, which I think is a, is great guidance, but I don't think it's productive for each one of us to sit behind the desk and say, "This is what I think." I think it would be best if all of that information was compiled by one person and presented that way.
So, there's a former Selectman, Jess Dodds, who is into, you know, evaluations like this. And when he was Chair, we talked about using a 360-degree evaluation, which is, you know, supervisors, you know, people that were, they were supervising as well as the person. And I'm sure if you sent out a call to Jess and asked for his opinion on how to do it, how to set it up, I'm sure he'd be willing to give some guidance.
I just think we're at a point where we really need to dig deep here and figure out what's, what's happening in all of our departments.
And maybe... It's a more professional way of doing it. It's a corporate way of doing an evaluation of a department head than just, like Liz says, you just sit here. I mean, you know, sometimes maybe you walk over to the fire station and see what they're doing on a Thursday night, but you really need a structure that's fair to the person being evaluated, and it's sort of, you know, standardized across all the different departments.
To follow up, what he's, Dave's saying is that maybe Jess or whoever, we literally hire that person to conduct a professional evaluation of the high-level department head.
How we pay them?
With money.
But, you know, I would, I would start with just asking Jess if he'd be willing to assist, and maybe Heather could reach out to him. And, I mean, he lives right over here in Hi, and, and maybe he'd be able to assist. Whether or not you want to hire Jess, that's up to the board's decision to hire him as an outside evaluator, because Jess knows the system. Jess was part of the system for supplementalers.
But to your point, we don't know enough about these positions. So, a professional going in, I'm just going through evaluating an executive director among a Board of Directors we're evaluating. And we brought in some professional help, because those folks know how to do it.
Right. Okay. So, do we need to schedule those dates right now, Heather, or can we wait again?
We can wait. I just want to make sure that when we figure this out, that we give both the Board of Selectmen enough time to comfortably finish their evaluations, figure out what process the board chooses to use, and also give the individuals enough time to...
Understand.
Both plan ahead that they're going to be here that evening, and also to put some time and thought into their personal reflection.
Well, the 7th is not a bad date.
Okay. Do you want to do two and one night?
I feel like if you do, if we move it to April 21st, that's like right on the end of budget. See what I mean? I feel like we're going to be sitting in here talking about how to balance the budget on the 21st.
Not here, April 21st.
Okay, so it won't be then. The 7th is not, I think the 7th would be fine, a tentative date.
For both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is someone going to follow up on Dave's suggestion? Are you going to call Jess and find out if there's an interest level?
If Dave will provide me with Jess's phone number. Otherwise, it'll take me a little bit longer to get it from the clerk's office and research, but we can do it.
It's probably, it's in there. I might have it.
Next, we have a PCF. I only have one here, though, Heather. Okay. We have a PCF for James Lumber, the van driver at the COA in a part-time capacity, replaces Richard Hutchinson, who retired. This was signed off by the PQB and the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee had waited to sign off, because they wanted to see where the funding was coming from. It's coming from a grant, in which case, they signed off tonight. I would accept a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The 24th. And we also have a PCF for Jeremy Labree, who is a temporary emergency position as a plow operator on call for large storms to fill in for absent employees. Also signed off by the PQB and the Finance Committee. Is there a motion to sign?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, this isn't on there.
I didn't have it.
You didn't get it.
I, I can't, I only put things on if I have copies. Sometimes what will happen is sometimes the PPV, knowing something will come, they'll put a copy in. But otherwise, if I don't have it in my hands on Thursday, when I'm preparing the agenda, I don't know that the person exists.
So, we have to wait to sign this?
Yes.
Okay. There's no PRFs at the moment? There's no licenses? There's no PRFs at the moment? There's no licenses, permits, or contracts? There are. We have the warrant for the town caucus. Warrant for the town caucus. Do I have to read this? Okay. Um, starting at greetings? All of it? Want me to read all of it?
We have it here, but.
I. Do I have to read this whole thing?
I would, I would just, David likes to read. I'll read it.
Uh, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Southampton, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the town hall, first floor meeting room, 210 College Highway in said Southampton, at 7:00 PM on Thursday, March 19th, for the following purposes. To elect a chairman to serve at the caucus, to elect a clerk to record the minutes of the caucus, to nominate candidates for election at the annual town election, Monday, May 4th, for the following offices. So everybody at home and in the room, here's what you can be elected to do in town. Almaner, do I have to read one for four years, all of that too, or just the positions? Almaner, board of assessors, two positions for board of health, cemetery commissioner, constables, three positions on the finance committee, housing authority, two of them, library trustee, moderator, park commissioner, personnel policies and procedures board, two positions on the planning board, one position on the Hampshire Regional School Committee, two positions on the Norris Local School Committee, one position, two positions for selectmen, town clerk, tree warden, and water commissioner. The polls remain open until 9:00 PM. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof at the town hall in said Southampton, and notices of the same usual places in said town, seven days at least, before the time of holding said citizens caucus. Hereof fail not, and make do return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of aforesaid meeting, given under our hands this 24th day of February 2015. Is there a motion to sign?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to go along with that, uh, we had a candidate's night?
Yes. Oh, let's do that.
So I spoke with, um, the Democratic Committee in town, and they are going to take it up on their next agenda to see if they'd be interested in possibly sponsoring and running this event this, this year. The candidate's night.
Okay.
They meet Monday at 6:00, upstairs.
Would they be willing to hire a moderator from outside the town?
I think they'd be willing to do what needs to be done, but remember, hire sounds like money, so it's gonna be more of finding a willing volunteer.
But I think it's a great idea, and we need to schedule one, because last year, it was really helpful. And I think it should be televised.
Well, they're, they're meeting on Monday. Let's see if they're interested first, and then see, you know, if they're interested, maybe they can take the run a little bit with it, because it really should be removed from the.
What time, what time Monday?
6:00.
upstairs?
Yes. Go ahead, Jackie.
I was trying to say, um, don't you think we should offer the Republican Party too to be involved?
They don't have a Republican committee.
We don't have a committee.
Really?
Yeah, I would actually suggest the Women League of Voters would be the best people to run the event, because they're the most neutral. Unfortunately, they don't exist here. Um, the Democratic Town Committee is the only one that exists. It's a nonpartisan election, so no one is a party. So if John's running against you, he could be a Republican, you could be a Democratic. It's irrelevant, because you're just running as nonpartisan candidates.
Right. I just wanted to be fair and eat the party so that.
What about the Green Party? Is there a Green Party?
Well, they're actually, the Green Party still exists. However, unfortunately, they're not popular enough to actually get their own name on the ballot anymore. However, the Pizza Party is gathering a lot of support.
Pizza Party?
Can we move on to the warrants? Who has those, and who could read them, please?
Jackie has them. Right here. I will be glad to take this one. You take that one, Jackie, okay? Okay. This, this is the payroll treasury warrant, P-1535, for $237,436.49. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Liz has got to sign this one. I'll hold this till you get back.
Is that all you have? That's it, Justice Sotomayor? I have a treasury warrant, uh, warrant 15 dash 34, in the amount of $107,149.83.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you make sure we don't miss any before you leave, so we don't have to stop in?
Uh, that's a two-part.
Yep.
Did you sign this?
Yes. There's a special paper that you're asking me to sign.
I'm just looking at your name, that's all.
But you do need to sign the second page of this one, Jackie. Is that everything? Payroll warrants, bill warrants?
That's all we have.
Okay. Um, we have minutes to approve from January 16th, which is, which was.
January.
26.
26.
Sorry. Um, which was an emergency meeting to call a state of emergency, and February 10th. Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
Yep. Before we go on, there's one more sheet, I believe. One pager, there it is.
Okay. It's just a loose sheet from a few weeks ago.
What about this one? Because it was in the sign, you take action, and there's a.
Yeah, that's, uh, annual training program you have.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes of the 26th, which just declared a local state of emergency?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And on the 10th, the minutes are in there, in your packet. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our next meeting is March 10th at 6:30. Um, the town caucus is March 19th in this room at 7:00 o'clock. The annual election is May 4th, from 12 to 8. Sometime in between now and then, there'll be a meet the candidates night. The annual town meeting is May 19th, and at this point, we're going, oh, where's my paper?
I want in the drawers. You don't have one.
We're actually missing a drawer.
I know. I don't know why.
We're going to move into executive session. We're not going to come back into open session, um, for multiple reasons. Three, six, two, three?
Two, three, and six.
Two, three, and six. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to con, conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining, bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, by roll call vote, please.
McDougal, aye.
Moulton, aye.
Searcy.
Martin, aye.